Next up is recognition of visitors. I didn't check the log, but something tells me we have some visitors who would like to address the board. I'd like to remind people, we're going to keep everybody's comments to three minutes. In the past, we let people go over. Tonight, we're not going to let people go over three minutes. If there's a group of people here together, it would be appreciative if you could pick a representative and save everybody speak. If you would like to pick a representative to speak for your group or two representatives, that would be appreciated, too. We've got a lot of stuff to talk about in our agenda. We've heard what a lot of people had to say in the past. More than welcome to say it again, just trying to be cognizant of everybody else's time. So... That up. I'll start seeing some of the names on here. We have Paula Emmerich. Would you like to address the board? Keep in mind, yeah. And there's also a chance later on in the meeting, same thing, if you'd like to address the board then, Alaya, same thing. Three minutes, name, address.
Okay.
Remember, it's not a conversation, but it is your choice, chance to address the board.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Paula Emmerich. I live 221011th Street in Winthrop Harbor, Illinois, and I thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. The reason I'm coming here, I'm hearing that you may be proposing sustained mask usage or something to that ilk or leveraging a vax against that, and I oppose both. I believe everything should be the rights of parents when it comes to the decisions of children's health. Okay? And for schools to mandate something like a mask, I believe, and I know that a lot of these people are going to talk about the health aspects of that, I'd like to address the indignity and humanity of being forced to cover your face. I look at you with a face covering, I don't know that I would recognize you or even understand your identity past that. And it's gone on and on and on in our culture right now. It was supposed to just be a couple of weeks to flatten the curve, and now it's talking in phase five about being like a permanent hygiene measure or something like that. And I just don't believe it's germane to our species to block our respiration and cover our identities. You know, we've all had our times to shine and display our image of God in our faces, and I think we need to extend that to our children as well and allow them to show their faces, advance, make advancements in their lives with the allurements of their smiles and their personal identity. And that's been lost on us. You can tell, you're asking people to repeat themselves over and over again when you go to a restaurant. We're blocking communication, you know? And like I said, it covers their dignity, it covers their identity, and I think kids need to have that in full force at this point in their lives and all the confidence that comes along with that. Thank you kindly.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Kim Manzoros, 2164 Cherrywood Court, Gurnee. I'm the parent of a student here at Warren, and I'm here to discuss the ongoing debate over mask-wearing in schools. Really shouldn't even be a debate. I'm pretty sure that you all are out and about on a regular basis maskless at sporting events and whatnot. We don't even have to really ask permission where it applies to masks. While there has been zero science to show that masks work, plenty of science showed that they do not. Flimsy pieces of cloth and surgical masks do zero to contain a virus. Most of you and your staff are taught to hide behind unions and ISB, and ISB has you in your back pocket, in their back pocket. But we have something of our own, and that's called the law. And I don't know why governments and teachers and unions think that we, the parents, are stupid enough to not do our own research. We are not letting even our kids or bully them into any non-science-based behavior such as masks and distancing. Legislators make laws. IDPH and ISB then report to the governor, who then makes recommendations. It's a recommendation, not a law. Local districts that choose what to implement is still not a law. HB 2789 has not been passed into law, and IDPH has no powers within the school. Guidelines are not enforceable by law. Illinois Administrative Code Title 2310.20, there are no rules about mask-wearing and viruses. If you go to illinois.gov/legislation and look up 105 Illinois CS5/2.302.5, you will see nothing about masks exist. The very notion that we're excused by schools that they will lose funding or can be shut down is completely false. As long as schools follow Title 23, nothing to worry about. It is, what is followed, 23 is what you need to follow. If you can show us anything that it says about masks, then show us. Schools are protected by tort immunity, which can be found at illinois.gov. So what are you going to do if every student comes to school this fall without a mask? Send them home? Give them a detention? Expel them? If so, you should be ready for a very busy year with many lawsuits that would be heading your way. Masks should be optional, period, no debate needed. And this is especially true where it pertains to sports, indoor or outdoor. Nobody should be running around with a vigorous activity in a mask. By now, anybody wanting the vaccine would have gotten it, and if you're so confident in the vaccine, then you have nothing to worry about, not to mention statistically, kids are practically 0% likely to become very sick from this virus. Never in any time have we inflicted this tyranny on our kids for something curable, never for flu, strep, colds, or any other virus or bacterial infection. The fact that this is a discussion is ridiculous. In closing, the fact that there is no statutory law requiring masks or to get tested or distanced, in fact, you'd be in violation of several state and federal laws, which I will pass out to each of you. I have a stack of them. It's a little bit of a read, but it is, I really highly recommend that you do review it because they are all 100% true and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Kim Geis.
Good evening. I'm Kim Geis. I'm at 1878 Beechwood in Gurnee. So bear with me because I'm very emotional and nervous here, but I'll get through this. 41,649. This is not a COVID number. This is the capacity of Wrigley Field, which is fully open and back to normal with no masks and no vaccine requirements. This nonessential activity for fun is open without restrictions, but here we are fighting for the right for our kids to attend school in person without mask and vaccine mandates. Yes, baseball is outdoors, however, you have to walk indoors like cattle to get inside the stadium seats. You have to wait in 30-minute-long beer lines, shoulder to shoulder. You have to wait in bathroom lines that wind down the hallways while everyone else is walking past, and all of this is legal in Illinois and all over the United States, and not one outbreak has been tracked from this happening. Here we are again, fighting for our kids' right to have education in school with only 20 to 25 kids in a classroom, with only a couple of minutes passing periods, not long enough to transfer COVID in the halls. Kids, not the ones who are at risk for catching and spreading COVID, but the ones who are rarely affected by the disease itself. It's your job to provide the best possible learning atmosphere for these kids without distractions, without interruptions, without restricting them to breathe, without masks or dangerous experimental vaccines. Forcing kids to wear masks, or worse, get a vaccine that's not FDA-approved, is proven to be more risk than benefit to kids and young adults. This vaccine has not completed full clinical trials yet. There's no knowledge of long-term side effects or history in it, since it's only been around for eight months. No one knows what will happen down the road from these shots. You're asking us as parents to put our kids' lives and health at risk and hope and pray that they are one of the lucky ones that isn't affected by myocarditis, seizures, fertility problems, or worse, death. This district is not in charge of our children's healthcare. We, as parents, are. The risk of forcing a vaccine upon our young kids and young adults with a 99% recovery rate is absurd. You do not have the right to risk my kid's health for a disease that is not a threat to them. Where does it stop? Is the school going to stop? Or does school decide next when the next pregnant teen shows up and they're going to tell them they need an abortion? Is the school going to stop feeding junk food to the obese children in the cafeteria? It's not your job. It's your job to educate the kids. These kids have been together in small and large groups over the past year and a half, hanging out together, playing sports together, working together, all without masks, and now you're going to force them to wear a mask to take education or take an experimental vaccine in order to get their education. We should have a choice. We should be allowed to raise our children in a way that we feel is best. We're asking you to allow families to make our own choice. Allow us to decide what we feel is the least risk for our children. For those that choose the vaccination or choose to wear masks, that is their right, and it's my right to wait as long as needed until we have more facts and transparency on adverse effects and deaths caused by this vaccine. And it's my kid's right to breathe fresh air while earning their education. My kids, along with many others, have antibodies from recovering from COVID last year. By following the science, you should agree that anyone with antibodies and natural immunity is much more protected than those with an experimental vaccine. We are not, however, willing to risk their life on something that is on a trial basis. My kids are not an experiment. They are my life. They are my everything, and I will fight forever to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi. Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Michelle Gonzalez. I live at 1128 South Pleasant Hill Gate, Waukegan, and I would like to thank the board for allowing us to speak with you today and address, hopefully, address our concerns. I'm a parent of two children, and again, also, I'm also falling on some emotion, but I do want to ask the board to help our students to return to normalcy in the fall, which means no mask mandates. Would it be optional to those families who want their children to wear masks? No saliva testing, no tracking of students, no singling out the unvaccinated. Why am I asking this? First of all, I know you've heard this, but the, it's almost like zero risk to children. More kids are dying of other things like cancer, suicide, accidents, pneumonia, flu than of COVID-19. Youth under 20, you know the survival rate, 99.997%. The risk to teachers and elderly are low. Over 75% of those 65 and older in Illinois have been fully vaccinated, and as a teacher myself in another district, I can tell you, teachers have had ample time since January, long before many others, to receive a vaccine if they wanted to. And they have no reason to fear these students who have been proven not to be super spreaders of COVID-19. Our teens have lost an entire year of normal school, and I can attest, I'm sure a lot of the parents in here have felt it. And if you have kids who did online learning, you felt it, and they weren't wearing masks at home, but coming back to school, they're excited, they're ready to go, and now they're going to be putting a mask on, eight hours a day. People who are going into the grocery store, putting a mask on, not a big deal. Try wearing it eight hours a day, okay? They pull at it like this to the point where they have holes in it. The constant touching causes the bacteria, the microorganisms on the mask, and trust me, these teens are not washing their masks, and they are not changing them. So I saw a mask day after day after day. Is that a new mask, honey? You might want to make sure your mom gets you a new mask. Is that a new mask? I don't think so. It's disgusting. Enough is enough. I don't know when the mask would, when would it end? What would be next in preventing something? So my plea is that you would please consider making them optional and not to single out anyone who has decided not to take the vaccine, which is still not FDA-approved, and allow the parents to make these medical decisions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Malia Noguchi, and I live at 699 Windermere Lane, Lake Zurich. I am a parent of two children, and I am here to support friends who have children in this district. And I am here to talk about the laws. To the person currently in charge of this school, there is no statutory law that requires you, your employees, or your students to wear a mask. Get their temperature taken, take a COVID-19 test, or stay three or six feet apart. There is no law that requires you to make accommodations for remote learning or reduce the number of students in your classrooms. In fact, if you require your employees or students to wear a mask or restrict their movement or entry if they are not wearing a mask, you are at risk for violating several federal and state laws. Any violation of the following laws will be reported to the appropriate authorities. As the person responsible for this establishment, you personally will be at risk for fines and imprisonment upon conviction of these crimes. There are five federal laws and 16 Illinois state laws that are being violated by requiring masks. Number one, the U.S. Constitution, first amendment, right to assemble, right to freedom of speech, right to religious expression. Requiring someone to wear a mask as a condition to attend your public school is an infringement of the right protected under the U.S. Constitution, the highest law of the land. No law is valid or lawful that violates the Constitution. No health order, emergency order, state of emergency, municipal ordinance, or school policy may suspend or violate the Constitution, period. That is one of the federal laws. I will move to Illinois state laws. I'm sorry, bear with me here. This is Illinois Compiled Statute 22560/3, Practicing Medicine Without a License. Requiring someone to wear a mask is a medical intervention. Unless you are a licensed medical professional, you have no authority to recommend such a practice. Further, a surgical mask is designated by the FDA as a medical device. You have no legal authority, responsibility, or liability to require that of either your students or your employees. Illinois Compiled Statute 725/32-5.1, Criminal Impersonation. You are not a law enforcement officer and have no authority to enforce any law or order. Impersonating a law enforcement officer is a crime in this state under Illinois Compiled Statutes 725/32-5/1. This Class IV felony is punishable by up to three years in jail and a fine up to $25,000.
Appreciate your comments, but you need to wrap it up, please.
Okay, I will read one more. Illinois Compiled Statutes 775-5-102A, Free and Equal Access to Public Accommodations. Your school is legally defined as a place of public accommodation, and as such, you may not prohibit entry by discriminating against someone for their medical condition, disability, or religious views. If someone is unable or unwilling to wear a mask for one of those reasons, you may not prohibit their entry, nor may you file a charge of trespassing because of their legally protected status. Just as you would not be able to deny entry to someone wearing a turban, and I will add, for somebody in a wheelchair, you may not deny entry to someone not wearing a mask. Offering remote learning, isolating children, or quarantining children is not a reasonable accommodation as it denies the full enjoyment and equal access to an education as required by law.
Thank you for your comments.
Julia Lundstrom, 33259 North Valley View Drive, Wildwood. I have two children registered in this high school. One will be homeschooled because remote learning failed him last year. The other one will be continuing. I would like to thank you for reconsidering the accommodations for students forced to quarantine according to your guidelines at this time, latest letter that you sent home to the parents, by your standards and testing, by providing remote learning to those students. Not every school in Illinois is providing this, but you have chosen to do so. After reading the laws, I had questions regarding your latest letter. What are your standards for considering exposure of a student that you would ask to quarantine if you're allowed to do that? What's the distance? What's the amount of time? How are you documenting this? Who is measuring this? Will there be recordings for proof of exposure before asking a student to leave their least restrictive and most supported learning environment? Will testing be required for students who are not vaccinated? What test will be used and what method? Will you be going through the mouth or through the nose? How often? What if the student does not comply? Will you or the person performing the test be held personally responsible for any injury that could result from this mandated testing that is being considered? What are the medical qualifications of the person or persons performing these tests? How will my child know if the person performing the test is qualified? Those are the questions I'll ask if the before-mentioned laws are not adhered to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Ulrich. I live at 1056 Suffolk Court, Gurnee. Thank you guys for coming. We have a big turnout. I'm glad to see that. Dean is holding a mask and it, I mean, a sign, and it goes to show you what states have lifted all of the mask mandates, and if you look at Illinois, they are one of them that has not. So all over the United States, we have people that have made laws that you cannot force people to wear masks. So it just goes to show that Illinois is behind the times. I'm going to read off a list of some of the school districts in Illinois that have chosen to make it optional for the parents to choose. Barrington, Chatham, Padoka, Vandalia, Jasper, Huntsville, Flanagan, Red Hill, Bridgeport, Moica, Lamont, Warsaw, Evanston. I won't go on, but there's like dozens of them that have already chosen the right option to let the parents choose, let the kids breathe. I'm going to read something that a really intelligent lady wrote. Mitigating strategies that have been forced upon our kids for a 99.9% recoverable virus, or worse, for our kids physically, emotionally, socially, psychologically than the virus. The science and the law, we know, are all on our side. So please, we voted for you to represent the parents and the kids. Please give the parents choice, one, on masks, two, testing, three, vaccines. To say a little bit about the vaccines, they say they're safe and effective, right? Well, someone already mentioned, right, there's cardio inflammation that is happening to who? The children, right? The 20-year-olds, the 17-year-olds that you're going to have in your school. If you guys push these masks and then dangle that these kids can take the mask off if they do an experimental vaccine, they're going to do it. They might even do it without their parents' knowledge, which is horrible. The cardiac issues are attacking the kids mostly. You guys have about 3,500 children. If you guys keep pushing this, you're going to have children walking around here with possibly gillian barre, which is nerve damage. Their bodies will attack their own nerves, blood clots to their head, their heart, their lungs. You guys are going to see this. They're going to be walking around if they don't die, and then the heart issues, okay? We have two children right here in Lake Forest, right in our back door. They're gone from the shot. One is in another little area right close to us, 17-year-old, 22, and another 17-year-old. You guys are going to see this. You have to stop it here, okay? So please, give us choice, let us decide. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
That was my wonderful wife. So I live at the same place. Hi, my name is Dave Ulrich. I live at 1056 Suffolk Court. I'd like to thank you guys for your service, and I know this is hard to do. You get a hearing from both sides out there. What I want to do is two things. I want to look at two recent studies that looked at masks. One said they were completely ineffective. They looked at 3,000 people that wore masks and 3,000 people that didn't wear masks, and there was no difference in number, 1.8 to 2.1. And I have those studies if you want. So the science does not support that masks stop the spread, period. The Danish study, which I have here, had authored by 21 doctors with mixed disciplines from MDs to PhDs, et cetera. They had 330 masks versus 294 unmasked, controlled, showed no significant difference in the infection, 42 to 53. So out of thousands, 42 to 53. The study listed limitations, as all good studies should do, and it was concluded that they couldn't demonstrate that it didn't stop spread or that it caused spread, but the numbers were too low. To do that, they would have to take four groups of people, two here masked, unmasked, two here masked, unmasked, spray them with distilled water, masked, unmasked, spray them with distilled water with the virus, and see who picked it up, because many people exposed to the virus have no symptoms. That's unethical. We used to do that in this country on prisoners. That's how we did our experiments less than 100 years ago. And if you want to go challenge that, look up the D.CZ syphilis study. That's when our government knowingly had black men that were infected with syphilis, and even though there was a cure, let them continue on to see how many went to tertiary syphilis. So the conclusion of this Danish study is they recommend, the recommendation to wear surgical masks to supplement other public health measures did not reduce SARS-CoV-2 infections rates by more than 50%. What they should have saw was the people that wore the mask who only had 26 infected, when in fact, they had 53 people infected. And then per something called MMWR, the Moridity Mortality Weekly Report, that's a CDC report that comes out every month, every week, excuse me, people admitted to the hospital for COVID over the past year and a half. 88% claimed to always wear or almost always wear their mask. 12% said they never wore their mask. So that's really interesting. And then that's the Danish study. The second study is adverse events due to mask-wearing. This is a German study authored by eight medical doctors, multiple disciplines, from immunology to neuroscience to physiology, psychiatry. They reviewed 1,113 studies from 2002 to 2020, and if you remember, back in 2002 was SARS-CoV-1 outbreak out of Wuhan, China, same virus family, the first coronavirus outbreak in China. And then they did a little algorithm to say, okay, we can't look at that many studies, so they got it down to 109 studies. The conclusion of reading 109 studies on adverse events of masks was the literature revealed relative adverse effects of masks in numerous disciplines, 15 disciplines, grouped into psychological and physical deterioration that cumulatively, the group into newly termed syndrome called Mask-Induced Exhaustance Syndrome. It breaks my heart when I walk into Menards and I see some in my age, in their 60s, with two masks on, hanging on barely to get into the door because they think they're protecting their health when in fact, they're hurting their health. So this Mask-Induced Exhaustance Syndrome is how they grouped all these disease states together, which means the mask observational science. And there's a dentist that had a new observation saying mask-mouth-disease. So people that wear their mask all the time, think of this, if you were to wear your handkerchief and blow into it in your handkerchief, you're going to get that bacterial recycling, and he's starting to see Canada albacans. This is what babies get called thrush. We should never have yeast in our mouth, and they're seeing, dentists are seeing yeast pop up in people's mouth, and also something called actinomyci species, which is not a good thing to have in your mouth. And there's also something called mask acne, mask knee, where you take mask and acne, put it together, and if you played football and you had, we called it football chin, where you had your football strap on your mask and you sweated all the time, you had acne down there. So the kids are seeing their acne break out.
Appreciate your comments, but you need to wrap it up, please.
Okay. And I have these studies if you want, but also is the adverse effects is these repeatable results support by the science. When I say science, the health science and the physiological science, that masks are bad for your health. I have a CO2 meter and an oxygen meter. I mean, we could do this experiment later on, is, you know, run around the room without the mask on, put the CO2 meter there, and it doesn't change. Run around them with your mask on, put the CO2 meter under there, it goes up 10 to 100 fold. So masks are not working, and they're actually bad for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Janice Scott.
I am Janice Scott, a concerned parent in the area. I'm actually not here asking for your permission or consideration, looking for your allowances of what you think you authorize for me and my family. Why? Because I am the parent guardian and protector of my family and offspring. I know this to be true because instincts, society and laws tell me so. We are still following laws, right? It's the general jurisprudence that policy does not supersede laws. For example, the Constitution 14th Amendment guarantees equal protection under the law to all people. No state can deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of law. Which is what you will be doing by segregating, testing and masking our offspring. The Bill of Rights also protects our speech, religion and right to assemble. All these laws correlate here because they require our offspring to be given equal educational opportunity, no matter what. You see, the government has only two jobs. To protect private rights and govern by consent. You are the public, you are public officials. These are your priorities as well. Illinois state law, specifically 745, section 5, specifically says that it's unlawful for any person, public or private institution, public official, that's you, to discriminate against any person in any manner because of such person's conscientious refusal to receive, obtain, accept, perform, assist, counsel, suggest, recommend, refer or participate in any way in any particular form of healthcare services contrary to his or her own conscience. Do you actually believe that by not wearing a mask and not being vaccinated and not testing is making others sick or putting them at risk? If that's the case, then by law, you need to prove that. If you all, you all need to prove that we are a public health threat and that you can lawfully treat us as such. According to the laws that you claim to follow, you don't get to treat others this way just because you think they are a threat. You must go through the proper legal channels to do so. Parents, please, continue to educate your offspring every chance you get. Politics are playing, medicine and certain ideologies have moved into our schools. These institutions cannot be trusted to have our offspring's best interest at heart. Please teach them to stand up for themselves, teach them about their inalienable rights. Teach them to be compassionate as well as passionate about fair and equal treatment. To know right from wrong and to stand up to the wrong. John Stuart Mill said in 1867 during an inaugural address. In short, because I only have three minutes. Evil triumphs when good men do nothing. The thing is, all of you boards have been asked to have mercy on our offspring while you debate about a decision on mask, testing and segregation. But we don't have to ask and there shouldn't even be a debate. We really hope you follow the laws because the people aren't going to keep standing up for the unlawfulness. You've been put on notice.
Thank you for your time. Weber, Weber, thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Weber, 226 Braxton Court, Grayslake. I'm a retired high school teacher. I'm grandmother of seven, three in high school. Two here at Warren. I'm gonna thank those who went ahead of me and did all the statistics and all the studies and all. I came tonight without something prepared. But it was interesting to hear all of that and thank you for going ahead with that. I came with questions tonight. One of the groups that we haven't heard much about yet this evening is the kids who are hearing impaired, as I am. Kids who are socially awkward or your ADHD kids or the ones that just haven't figured out how to deal with all these other really cool, really scary, really weird, really wonderful people around them. And they've had a year and a half of isolation. So with the mask, it's really hard on a regular day to hear and understand people. When you're hearing impaired, it's double trouble. Not only is it garbled, but you can't read lips, which many of us depend upon. Now, I know they do have the masks with the little clear window thing in there. Haven't tried those yet because I've spoken with my hearing doc, my audiologist and all. And they fog up, they are plastic up against your mouth. And I can't imagine the heat. You know, with kids trying to run or understand. So we really do need to consider the detriment we're going to do to that population. Let alone all the other kids in sports and everything else trying to run and trying to do everything with masks. So I would really love to see this be an optional option, allowing the parents to take that control of their decisions. The other thing I have a question of too is if a student is sick, doesn't feel well, they have a headache, they're caught, heaven forbid, are you coughing once in line at the jewel? And trying to hide because people are going to tackle you because you must be a super spreader? So the kids, the teenagers are concerned about that. I do have a teenage, one of my high schoolers that has ongoing headaches. Terrified to go to school because they come and go, we're working with doctors now to try to figure it out, but they come and go. She doesn't know when it happens, all of a sudden, she's gotta go to the nurse. She's afraid to go to the nurse, I have a headache. What? She's going straight to quarantine or so she thinks, it's not COVID. So my question is, and you may not be able to answer it at this time, is will there be a a form or something on the website or whatever to let parents know so we can prepare our children? That heaven forbid, they have to go down to the nurse. What will that's, what will that be? What, what kind of an experience will that be for them in this crazy COVID times? And that's what I had to ask about. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Alex.
Hey everyone, Alex Courtney, Rosemary Road, Highland Park, AKA The Hood. I wanna thank everybody for sharing all the facts and statistics. Took something to show up here today. I really wanna acknowledge all of you, thank you so much. So what I'm here for is in the possibility of health education. And in that possibility, I want you all to consider context, what else is possible? I just want you to try that hat on, okay? As we go through this little speech together. So I'm a stand for health, children and humanity. And I've been a health and wellness professional for the past 12 years. And I've been facilitating healing and performance for college athletes, people with heart disease, chronic degenerative disease. You know, the real killers that are really pervasive in our culture. And we've been focusing on causes. And what I wanna bring our attention to is symptom-focused healthcare is not the solution right now. If we really think wearing a mask is gonna stop the world's worst pandemic, we're really short-sighted and we're missing the boat. Takes perspective. The holistic approach takes perspective. We have to look at everything, not just one thing. Cause the mainstream narrative is not working. And it's unworkable. It's not working. A possible side effect of vaccines is death. Pharmaceutical companies have legal immunity. That's pretty scary. This flu has an over 99.9% survival rate. Asymptomatic sick people, that's ridiculous. I've been in healthcare for 12 years, I've never heard of that, that's ridiculous. Doctors would have laughed at that before this. You can still get COVID after the vaccine. Is the vaccine working? What's with all the censorship and fear? Why is it that every time I'm challenged about wearing a mask, it's deduced to a trauma response and I'm ridiculed and called a Trump supporter? What happened to pneumonia? PCR test is meaningless, said the inventor who died a year before this pandemic. Masks are ineffective and there's no science. So again, I'm gonna ask you all, what else is possible? Cause this is not working. What about teaching our kids how to breathe? Connect with their emotions? Be aware of what's going on. Stop putting them in so much fear and telling them what to do all the time, letting them think for themselves. This is such a beautiful opportunity for us to really create something positive and possible. What about teaching them about sleep and recovery, eating whole foods, critical thinking, discernment? What about all these skills? Are we teaching our kids these things? Are we gonna tell them, wear a mask and shut up and listen to the TV? So again, I'm gonna ask you, what else is possible?
Appreciate your comments, but you need to start wrapping it up, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Pfizer has been a habitual offender, persistently engaging in illegal and corrupt marketing practices. Bribing physicians and suppressing adverse trial results. Since 2002, the company and its subsidiaries have been assessed $3 billion in criminal convictions, civil penalties and security awards. Do we want criminals making decisions for our children? So I'm gonna ask you one more time. What else is possible? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
Good evening, my name's Jim Rand and I live at 6293 Old Farm Lane here in Gurnee. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. I wanted to thank our board for listening to all of this, so thank you for that. And as you guys get together and, well, even before you get together and start thinking about this and voting. I wanted to ask a question. How many people in this room have been bullied? How many people have been made fun of? How many people have made fun of people? Yeah, I have. When I was in high school, I was a big jerk. And when somebody was different, I was in the jerk crowd and I would make fun of them. And I think, when I, when I think about this and there's a lot, the folks before me did a did a very good job of, I think, a very good job of talking about the science of this. I was thinking when I, when I read the letter that I wouldn't wanna be a kid singled out. Because if, if, if kids today are like they were 10 years ago when I was in high school? I think they're, I think they're gonna get made fun of. And so I, yeah, and so my son, yeah, he's probably strong enough that, and that it's gonna be okay. But out of 4,500 or how many kids are here in school? I think it's probably gonna be a lot of them that get made fun of, that get singled out. And I don't think that's a good thing. But I know it's, it's you guys are gonna vote on this, so as you guys are voting on this, just, just think about that. And I would just encourage you to think about that. And also, just wanted to say that, so this is the, this is the lowest, I don't say lowest is in a bad way, but this is the most local form of politics. And we're all neighbors. And I'm sure that there's probably some of us that are neighbors and we don't even know it. And so you guys are here making decisions for the community and, and you're listening to all of this. And I would just also ask that as you consider this, that there's a lot of passionate people here. And oftentimes, when people are passionate about things and you don't have the same viewpoint, it's very easy just to say, eh, I'm not gonna listen to that or consider it or think about it. I would just ask you to, and I think we'd all ask to consider that. And thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Becky Howell Adams, 687 Pierce Court, Grayslake. I have a student at Warren at 4787 Middle Road. I also have a student in Grayslake, so I'll be attending Grayslake. I'm a scientist, I'm a mother of four children. I'm an advocate for health because one of my children has autism. So he has non-verbal communication. I work at Abbott. I taught medical students at Northwestern University Medical School when I was there doing my thesis on pillinagenic variation. I know a lot about DNA, I've developed PCR tests, I develop immunoassays, so I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone because we have something going on that is akin to an influenza season. And now I have to get up here in front of people and talk about why we need our children to take personal responsibility. Choose joy, choose happiness, choose breathing, choose health. And the way you choose health is by breathing. Masks are used in manufacturing to protect the product from your own body fluids. They do not work. People even will look at Dr. Fauci to say, well, he said they didn't work, but now he says they do. When you look at the Freedom of Information emails, what was going on with Fauci? He's basically a political pawn. This is his real opinion about the masks from his own emails last year. Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. Sylvia, masks are really for infected people. The typical mask you buy in a drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. It might provide slight benefit to keep out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you. I do not recommend that you wear a mask. She was traveling through an airport. His colleague Andrea Lerner, N-I-H-N-I-A-D-A-I-D. Dr. Fauci, she found that the bottom line after reviewing mask studies that had been going on for decades, decades of research on influenza virus and SARS-CoV-1. Her bottom line to her superior. I, in general, there was no differences in ILL, ILI, influenza-like illness, URI, upper respiratory infections or flu rates when masks were used. Although when used early and compliance was taken into account, a few times differences were seen. So they're really trying to stretch forcing everybody to wear masks. Another person from the dental community reaching out an email stating, as we know, surgical masks do not filter out COVID virus. They were emailing him because they wanted to stop routine dental stuff and only have emergency because they were worried for themselves acquiring COVID. That's back where we didn't know what protective methods and treatments were effective for COVID. And Fauci's own interview, again, this is probably going back to about March 2020, interviewed by Gebelhoff. Fauci was asked, what should the average person be doing now about coronavirus? He ends it with, so the question is, should we do anything different from what we're already doing? No. Should we all be wearing a mask? Absolutely not. I don't think you guys have heard the science. You've only heard the political spin. If you have heard the science, it might make your teachers feel better knowing that when they evaluate this past COVID season, over 300 households over 300 households in Scotland looking for associations of hospitalizations and case rates from COVID, they looked, and the more young children per household, the more protective effect it had on the adults not getting hospitalized for COVID. Children recover from this if they even show a sniffle. That protects the adults. They cannot have healthy immune systems without oxygen. They cannot have healthy immune systems if they are stressed out with anxiety, being called disease spreaders, being singled out for not having a vaccination.
Appreciate your comments, but you need to wrap it up, please.
Do what's right for the health of our children. If you need to educate your teachers because they're afraid of our children, I'd be happy to share that study that shows that children have a protective effect. And I hope you consider that their highest experts and our government in their own emails know that these masks don't work. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but as a veteran of this country, standing up here and starting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, the words liberty and justice for all. Look up liberty, as I just did. The definition. The state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views. The scope or scope to act as one pleases. So I ask, as you sit up here and say the pledge before these meetings, do you think about what those words mean? I served this country proudly and I come back here tonight and I want to live in the country that I was proud to serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and your service. Would anybody else like to address the board? Keep in mind, there'll be a chance later on at the end of the meeting. So if nobody else would like to address the board, let's move forward. Next up is the President's Report. Nothing to report tonight. And I don't have any topics for future meetings unless somebody else has something that they'd like to talk about. And it's just a matter of the announcement of the 2021-22 School Board schedule. Nothing to act on. It's just that's being published. We've talked about this at past meetings and now it's formalized. The next up is an update on our IASB Superintendent Search Survey and Announcement. I turn it over to you, Patricia.
Thank you and good evening. Nice to be back with you. And for parents or community members who were not here when I was here previously, my name is Patricia Vineyard. I'm a consultant with the Illinois Association of School Boards, retired superintendent. And I'm part of the team that helps school boards hire superintendents and other central office personnel. So as we have talked previously, one of the first things that a board needs to do to recruit and hire a superintendent is to develop an announcement of vacancy. And part of what the announcement of vacancy includes is information about your district, information about your community, as well as the specific traits and characteristics that you're looking for in your next superintendent. The way you determine that is through getting input from the community, which you clearly value. So you put out a survey, actually IASB, it's our survey, but we sent you the link and the information. You distributed it to staff, parents, community, and then board members were also surveyed. So I'm going to go over the survey results. How many people responded from each group and some, we look for themes, things that are important across all of the groups. From that, I have developed a draft of the announcement of a survey. We'll take a look at that tonight. So one of the goals is if we can come to consensus or as soon as we come to consensus on the information in the announcement of vacancy, it will be posted and it will be distributed statewide as well as nationally to begin to generate interest and get candidates who are interested in being your next superintendent. I'll also leave, there were open comments, an open comment section, both for the online survey as well as for the board survey. I'll leave you a copy of those. And then very briefly, an updated timeline. The first thing coming around is just kind of the raw data regarding how many individuals in each of the groups who took the online survey. And a lot of you probably took it. You had a chance to clip to mark, am I a teacher? Am I a parent, a community member? And then you, there was a section where there are skills and competencies that a superintendent is expected to have and know and perform. And obviously, we want someone strong in all areas. It is, but every district identifies those areas that are most important for the next, say, five years for their district. So first of all, numbers. You'll see all board members responded, 105 staff members, 191 parents, and 16 who identified as community members. So very strong turnout speaks well to your community advocacy for your district and interest in your district. So the first 15 items in each of those boxes lists those 15 competencies that you saw if you took the online survey. And you were, everyone was asked to identify the five. And again, we want somebody strong in all areas. We will look for some, someone strong in all areas. But some districts are looking more for a financial person. Some districts are looking for someone more to improve academic achievement. And maybe finances are great, but they're really looking for someone to improve curriculum programs. So you're really trying to identify those top themes. And from that, there were some that just kind of jumped out that were across all four groups. Number five, which dealt with acting with integrity, fairness, and an ethical manner. Number two, which spoke to, speaks to the school culture and instructional program. Number 10, lots of comments and feedback from the board and others regarding the financial aspect, being able to interpret complex educational and financial data. Number four, collaborating with faculty and community. Number 13, maximizing financial and human resources. Number one, ensuring the success of every student through a vision of learning. And number 14, facilitating long and short-range district goals. After that, you as the board and those who took the survey online had a chance to respond to some things. Is it important that the next person you hire have successful experience as a teacher, as a principal, as a superintendent? Those kinds of things. Overwhelmingly, and not surprisingly, yes. Previous successful experience as a teacher is essentially a non-starter. That was important to all of the groups. Same with previous experience as a principal. That was important to all groups. The board was, oh, and all were asked about previous experience as a superintendent. And this tends to be true as we do this survey and have done it many, many hundreds of times, that it tends to be a bit split. And so we, I have a suggestion for you on that, but ultimately, it's the board's decision if you want to say previous experience as a superintendent is required or previous experience as a superintendent is preferred. So you will see that draft here in just a moment. And, you know, I will be honest with you, there was an error. Something was accidentally put in that shouldn't have been. So it differed from the board survey. So the last item on the board survey, the first box says, was it important to you that the person resides in the district upon employment? Again, this tends to be often split. We tend to find that parents, taxpayers, board or taxpayers too, obviously, but the community tends to say, yes, it's very important to us that the person resides in the district after employment. Teachers and staff tend to say, we want the best person. We don't necessarily care if they reside. And boards tend to be a bit split. What, and the board was split. Two said, yes, they think they should definitely reside. Four said, not necessarily, no. And one said, if possible. Here's where the error happened with our administrative assistant. The online survey should have asked the same thing. And somehow, an old verbiage got in there and it said, is visibility in the community important for the superintendent? And of course, overwhelmingly, they said visibility in the community is important for the superintendent. So our administrative assistant sent her apologies that should have, they should have also responded to as residency important. I will tell you that in every survey that we've done, it tends to be split. Parents tend to say, yes, that's important to us. Teachers tend, again, tend to say, not really. And board tends to be split. And again, I have a thought and recommendation on that. So next is a draft. Thank you. So once the board finalizes and approves it, it will be up on your website. It will be disseminated throughout the state. It'll be on the IASA, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards, school administrators' website. It will be on IASB. It's our website, Illinois Association of School Boards website. So, and we also provide hard, physical copies, paper copies to the board and administration to put in your offices, disseminate as you wish to. You are, as you know, a large school and there was a lot of information. And thank you, Mrs. Love, for the work that you and others did putting this together. Once in a while, if we get a lot of information about a district, in your large district, you have two campuses, what have you, we do, instead of a small brochure, we do a booklet and that's what we are proposing. And when we did the search previously for you, we did a, the same thing, a booklet. So I numbered these pages just for our reference. So when it comes out and when it's a nice copy and it's a color copy, the page numbers will not be on there and it will look a little dressier. But this is our draft for us to talk about tonight. So the cover page is the cover page. If you turn to page two, the most important information there about the timeline is the application deadline. What I presented to you and what I'm still under, my working understanding is that the deadline to apply would be October 15th. So once this comes out and is disseminated, that gives ample time for superintendents, assistant superintendents to get the school year going, but then still have time to complete this. But also for you to stay on your timeline to have the next superintendent named by winter, say, right around that winter break time. So October, and then also that October 26th. Again, I've tried to align with your board meeting so you don't have to have a special board meeting for me to present those slate of candidates. If you turn to page three in the packet, nothing really here for you other than if you're interested in seeing that, this is information to candidates about how they apply. They apply online through AppleTrack through, for, with us, IASB. Please turn to page four. Pages four, five, and six are information about your district that you provided to us. And so a person who is thinking about applying to be superintendent here, they are going to do a lot of homework, but one of the first things that they will do to learn about your district and to get in a nutshell, what's your, what, how many staff do you have? How many schools do you have? What's your curriculum like? What's your, what do you do for transportation? What's the area like? What's the area offer? Those kinds of things and enrollment, et cetera. So that's on pages four, five, and six. So if you happen to see anything that does not look accurate, please let me know. And it may just have been something when we were copying, pasting, transferring over what you sent us. But hopefully, this is accurately representing the information about the district and your community that you sent. Please turn to page seven. And this is probably from our perspective, the most important page of the booklet. And that is the ideal candidate. What are you as a board, you as, you representing the community? What specifically are you looking for in your next superintendent? So those bulleted points that you see there are in priority order and they reflect the feedback from the board, staff, parents, and community. Those were the top themes. I mentioned those and you see those listed there. Under that, you see in bold and underlined, and that's where just a little discussion is needed. And this is typically where with every board and every search, a little discussion is needed. And that is, how does this look to you in terms of what is required and what is preferred? So based on the survey feedback, what I have right now is previous successful experience as a teacher is required for someone to, for us to consider and bring them forward to you, as well as previous successful experience as a principal is required. Again, that was based on your feedback, everyone's feedback. The previous superintendent experience for now in this draft, I have left as and recommend that you put it as preferred and not required. However, just because I said my recommendation is that you leave it as preferred, if you feel strongly that it be required, I change it to required. This is your search, I'm the facilitator. The reason that, that I am recommending preferred is based on the survey feedback and based on the fact that there could be an assistant superintendent, a CSBO, an associate or deputy superintendent who is ready and prepared to take on this position. But by putting, but by making the requirement, previous soup experience is required, that would prevent those people from applying or from, or from being considered. Yes. Please jump in at any point.
Okay. In your experience, does putting it as preferred stop those people from applying because they feel as if the board, because they put preferred in there, there's an assumption that that's what we want? And so I guess in my experience, have, has that stopped people? Do you find that people that haven't had the superintendency still are in the applicant pool, even when preferred is in there?
Great question. And the answer is yes. And I'll make sure I'm answering which question is the yes. Yes, they still apply. And no, it does not discourage them from applying if they're currently not a superintendent. If, they know that preferred means almost, if you will, a slight preference or all things being equal, these two candidates really seem to have the, a very similar profile and strengths that the board might look more favorably on someone who's already sat in the chair and proven themselves. But no, it, I think that you will find, and we have found with many, many, many searches, that when it says preferred, and sometimes it will even say strongly preferred, and people who have not been superintendent, who believe they're ready and would love to come to this district will still apply. But I appreciate that question and please, this is meant to be like that. Where as soon as you have a question, please just ask it. Then the residency question. And again, I completely own, our organization owns that that should have been asked on the online survey too. And we don't know why that sentence got switched out for an old sentence. So however, that said, my recommendation would be, but it's ultimately up to you, it would be that residency in the district is preferred and not required. And some, so, and a couple of things and reasons and other thoughts about that. One is that somebody may live very, very close, just close to your boundaries, but not in the boundaries and maybe have a student who's a ninth or a 10th grader in high school and they really would like that child to complete his or her high school career where he is. Now, because of that, sometimes districts who want it to be required, but they understand that. I had a district earlier this year who said residency, I think they worded it something like residency required. And then maybe it said, the timeline for relocation is negotiable with the board. And that meant, maybe if I said, you really liked me as a candidate and I really want to come here and I- to come here, and I sell you, it's dependent on me selling a house, I can't buy another house, since I own a house, or I have this child who I really want for him or her to finish his high school career. So, if residency is important to you, and based on the survey feedback, it was somewhat important, but not a deal breaker. If it's very important to you upon further reflection, I would recommend that, that if you want to say required, to put something in about negotiate, the timeline for relocating would be negotiable. My recommendation would be to put preferred, because someone coming from, typically someone who's applying from a distance away, is completely planning to relocate anyway, and the only ones who wouldn't would be folks who are within a really short driving distance. And, and I do understand it from someone who's worked as a teacher interventionist, principal, assistant soup and soup, and almost exclusively lived in the communities and was a taxpayer where I worked, but not in my last position, and it was due to the cost of housing and the timeline that I was on to find a house. So, I think that I'm going to be quiet at this point, because those, those things that are bolded and underlined, perhaps a little discussion from the board, because it would be great if we could come to, if you could come to consensus tonight, because again, as soon as this is finalized, this goes out to our 8,000 individuals that are on our mailing list, who are interested in seeing our job postings.
So, I'll lead off, board members. I like the way it's written right now. I think it kind of reflects the way that we respond, and the way that the town responded. I mean, you know, success experience in teacher, yes. Experience as superintendent, preferred, but not a deal breaker. And actually, with residency, it's preferred once employed. I'm okay if there was some verbiage to put in there to soften it a little bit, just to let people know, hey, we're flexible. It's preferred, but we're flexible. Not saying that's what the word should be, but I don't want, to Mr. Demonte's point, I don't want people to think, oh, it's preferred, but is that their way of saying, ah, it's preferred, but we really want you to move here?
That's kind of the preferred piece, although preferred, like, I know what preferred is defined, but it could be a preventer. And I think there are some pieces in there that are negotiable in my mind for the right candidate. So, the qualifications of the person, the leadership, like, in, you know, this one person of Seven's opinion far outweigh if they live in Grayslake versus within our bound, like the part of Grayslake that's not within our boundaries. So, it's like, and, and I get, if they have kids, then let's say that child has special needs, and there's specific programming, like, there's, there's things going on in life, and I actually appreciate that. Like, if there's a family and family dynamics that, that just are at play, like, that's, that's a value that I would love to see in a superintendent, and to me is not, I, I wouldn't want this. So, like, I don't know if there's a way, even in thinking out loud, as crazy as it sounds, like, preferred is almost, to me, an inhibitor. What about, like, not required? So, residency in the district is not required.
So, I, I actually would have a suggestion, and it is what is most often done in the Chicago suburbs. This residency tends to be a much-
No, it's a smaller town, smaller district phenomenon, which up here typically-
Yep, below I-80, it tends to be much more of a factor, just given how far apart districts are, the size of districts, what have you. What, probably then, from, as I'm reflecting and appreciate what you're saying, because it's making me rethink what I've put there as a recommendation, you can take it totally out and just not reference residency. So, if it's strongly preferred or required, you have to have it in. If it's not something that is of significant importance to you one way or the other, you simply take it out. And that's another option.
I cut you off, so please continue, and then there's other people.
You know, my, my preference is, you know, I don't care if they live a half hour or more away, because they could have some really good reasons to, as long as that doesn't prevent them from doing the job. I know how many hours our administrators are here right now, early mornings, nights, weekends, and all that. I don't think people realize what's involved in the job, as long as this candidate does. I'd still like to put something there in residency, you know, and I'm okay saying residency is not required, because I think if we're silent on the issue, people are going to ask that question. So, let's address that question upfront, instead of having them wonder about it.
So, would you say not required, but still preferred, or leave off-
Say, not required. Because, just like Mr. Demonte said, I think, preferred, it's like, you know, it's like with kids sometimes, you say it's okay to do something, but then they ask you, is that a trick question? Okay, it's preferred that you live here, okay, but do you really mean that?
Got it.
So, I want to make it really clear that it's not an issue. Go ahead, Mr. Demonte, you had more?
No, I, I mean, I just want to, I mean, if you guys all feel otherwise, please, I'm not, this isn't that huge of an issue, it's just a comment.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I've heard from, I'm not sure heard from everyone, what's on the, sort of being considered right now, and starting to hear a consensus, is tweaking that part to say residency in the district is not required.
Correct.
That's what the language would be.
Yep.
Further discussion?
I'm agreeable with all the characteristics, and those are good, that's a good list.
And for superintendent, we're going to keep preferred?
As long as it doesn't stop people from applying. I, I do think there's, you know, an opinion, again, I have to preface this, because I don't want it to come out wrong, but there, there are some cabinet-level administrators who are more than ready to lead. And there are, quite frankly, some superintendents that maybe aren't as strong as some cabinet-level administrators that are out there. And I just, for this community, we want the best of the best leading this district. And to me, the more qualifiers you have, the more that gets filtered. And I like, I like a net cast wide, cast wide, and we ask lots of questions and learn, and maybe there's, you know, and, and we kind of get to that right person. So, I, that's why I asked the question, and that's my qualifier, is as long as it doesn't prevent a great person from applying.
And, and I guess, I, I share your concern, but if, if, I'm not a superintendent, but I want to apply, I want the people that say preferred, and are going to say, I'm applying, I'm good for it. If they, if they say preferred, and they say, ah, I think they mean required, I really don't want it, I don't want that candidate. I want the ones that are confident, saying, I can do this.
So, that's a good point. It's the people that are so confident that-
Yeah, absolutely, that's what we want.
Fair point.
I think that that makes sense. Not to muddy the waters, I was hesitating, something that I had in an earlier draft was, previous successful experience as a superintendent or district-level administrator is preferred. And, and then, really, the, the required are the non-starters. The required, they need, of course, to have the Illinois certificate, superintendent endorsement, licensure, but right now, it's teacher and principal is what is required. And so, I, I would either keep it as it is, as preferred, or if it would, and I do, I can tell you, it will not, it will not keep central office folks, assistant soups, from applying.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Then we'll just leave it then as it is.
What about the, when the survey asked if we wanted them to have a doctorate?
The doctorate just went to the board, and it was, I think it was split with that not being, oopsie.
Yeah, it was three, three, and one.
Three, four, one?
Three, three, one.
Three, three, one. Three S, three no, one said, not sure.
Yep.
You are, again, I, I think that if you wanted to include something about that, I would put preferred, but I think you're going to, you are going to find people who are either, I would say, by and large, you're going to find people with a doctorate, or with a specialist degree, or in a doc program, or obviously, minimum masters, so.
My, my neutral reaction is to leave that comment out.
That was mine as well. And I meant to mention that, so I'm glad you said something while it was left out. And again, this is really the critical page, because this is what tells me, as an aspiring or current superintendent, am I what you are looking for? Am I what the Warren Township High School Board is looking for? So, this page obviously gets and deserves the most attention. The questions at the bottom, and number seven will be at the bottom of that page. In formatting, it got bumped, when I added page numbers, it got bumped to the top, but that's a residency question, and that will now be taken off or changed in the wording. So, just so you know, those six questions at the bottom of page seven, every candidate will respond in writing to those questions. And we evaluate, you will get all of those, you will get their complete application. So, you will see not only how they write, how well they write, which we evaluate it both for how they communicate, and how's their grammar and spelling and punctuation, but also what they're saying. So, how they answer it and how they write. And then, I believe the last page is district financial data, tax rate, board of education members, and their numbers of years of service are listed there.
In the list of applicant questions, and I don't, and I'm just speaking out loud, can we ask if they speak any other language other than English?
Oh, that is-
Just, to me, that's important, because we have a, a high percentage of, and I'm not saying it has to be Spanish, but in general, we have a, a high percentage. We're very diverse.
A, a theme on all surveys. It being a strength of the district, diversity, and something that the next person coming in, that you want him or her to have knowledge and comfort and expertise and ideas and what have you. And so, the answer to that question is, it is already part of our application process. There is a section that says, do you speak any other language? And if so, what is it? And at what level of competency, polite, fluent, what have you? Yep. So, and you will get that information. Great. Other questions or comments? Clean this up tonight, take the page numbers off, fix any things that bumped up, up to the next page, make sure that the wording on that page, I think it was seven, is accurate. And then, I will send the final draft to you, Mr. Schultz, tomorrow morning. I think that our administrative assistant, I believe she is in, working tomorrow, and get that to you for just a final looksee. If you have a chance this evening to look it over again, just if you happen to see anything, once, once in a great while, someone will say, I think there's a, two thes in a row or something like that, from when our administrative assistant did a, did a copy and paste. But then, this will be, this will be distributed and posted state and national in the next 24 to 48 hours.
And that'll give me a chance to send it out to the three board members who aren't here tonight, and I'll let them know they need to respond pretty much overnight, if they've got something to add.
And if it's the fact that you're not on a really tight truncated timeline, if it's a day or two, that should be fine, but yeah, the sooner the better.
One day will turn into two, so I'll say one day.
True for a lot of us, isn't it? Okay. Then, really, this is, I'm 98% done. But thank you for your time, this is just such a critical piece. I think I gave away all my copies, but that's okay, I know what's on there that I wanted An extra, thank you. When we talked about, and you approved IASB to help facilitate this search for you, I had a timeline, and so, I wanted to, I wanted to update one thing, that I think I told you, Mr. Schultz, in an email, but I wanted to make sure everyone knew it, and it is good news. So, I, you see the updated date there at the top, 7:20, about, about approximately half the way down. One of the optional, but recommended services that you agreed to, and that was put in the contract, and it was for an additional fee, it was an additional $3,000. We had a staff meeting last week, and our team really strongly advocated to our boss, and then in turn, to the executive director of IASB, that that is a really important part of the process that every district should get. And that is where we take the, all of the applicants, we narrow it down to 10 or 12, and we actually have some face time with them to get that slate down to the six-ish that we'll bring to you. So, the amount for that optional service that you said you wanted will be taken off your bill. So, we're retroacting that to anyone who has a 21, 22 search, and that's, that's a great thing, it will be a savings of $3,000. We, we now want to provide that to everyone. So, I just wanted to point that out. And so, that is basically it for me, other than I'm going to hand out two things, and one is, at the end of the board survey, you will recall, there was a place for open comments, points of pride for the district, and what, anything else you would like to say about the, the person who will succeed your current superintendent and be the next superintendent. And same on the community online surveys, there was a place for other comments, what else would you like to say? And so, the summary of the board survey comments for points of pride, again, I mentioned this earlier, someone mentioned it, and that was diversity. The diversity in the district is a point of pride. Second was, and actually, the number one was the achievement, academic resources, and opportunities for students. Another area was clubs, activities, and sports, and then there was a section that I called other. So, that was under points of pride. And the, I grouped also the comments that you said in terms of what are you looking for in the next superintendent. And strong communication skills was one of them, someone innovative, strategic, and competent, someone who understands, will embrace, and advance the diversity, someone with financial expertise, and of course, someone with integrity. So, a copy of the, here you go, thank you, a copy of the board comments, and then a copy of the comments from the online survey, and it is broken out, and there's a heading, one says, staff responses, one says, parent responses, and then the last section says, community responses. This is six pages of fairly small font, so I am not going to read them to you, but what I ask, and what we will, and one more here to pass out, thank you, sir. What is suggested is that you look for themes, and that you incorporate some of those themes into the questions that you'll start to develop for first round interviews and second round interviews. Apologize if I've taken too long, but this is probably the lengthiest time that I will be in open session with you. Any questions or comments before I exit?
No, one comment, you have not taken up too much of our time. We appreciate it very much. One question, and all the staff responses and other responses, these are unedited responses, or?
Oh, great question. They are largely unedited. There is a comment, when folks filled that out, and it's actually the same for the board, so it's not just on the online survey, there's a statement that says, if something is, for example, inappropriate, or singles one person out, say in a slanderous kind of way, or cursing, we will lightly edit for that. And I, I know, and I pointed out to you, Mr. Schultz, at the beginning of the meeting, there was one individual who had a statement and said, essentially, I want to know if I'm being censored, here is my number, and here's my name and address, and, and nothing was censored or edited, but in speaking with my boss, it's not our, our practice to reach out to individuals and have that kind of communication, it's, it's the IASB's survey, but just want you to know that only if someone said, this person and names them is a horrible human being, or this, or says, again, something that's just not helpful to the process or harmful in some way, those were lightly edited. Other comments?
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you. So much for your time tonight, and down the road.
Okay, yes, be in touch, thank you.
Next up on the agenda is committee reports.
Dr. Engel, do you have our last finance committee meeting?
The last finance committee meeting took place last week, Wednesday, on July the 14th, 7:00 PM. We did the call to order, reception of visitors, we approved the finance committee meeting minutes of June 8th. We also reviewed the financial challenges that the district is facing. We also reviewed the ongoing reductions in staffing and programming, and we reviewed the student fee structures. Later this evening, this is how we kind of wrapped it up, is that there's going to be a discussion of appropriate amount needed for the future tax increase of a question that's on the agenda for later this evening as well. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thanks, Mike. And while you have the mic, and firstly, on the superintendent's report, I think we want to move to is the treasurer's report. move to is the treasurer's report.
Yeah, I'm just going to give a quick update. This is for the month of June. Now remember, these are non-audited numbers. We're going through an audit right now for fiscal year 21. So the current fund balance breakdown as of June 30th, 2021 is at $35.4 million. You take out debt service, which is at 2.4 million, capital projects at another 700,000. You end up with 30.7 million dollars of that, the reduction of the working cash bonds that are still remaining, the probation amount leaves us with a balance of about 20.7 million dollars or 29.65%. So we finally made it in the month of June to ISB's bare minimum requirement of 25%. So we made it by 4.65%. And again, this is the same comparison as before, 12 years ago, the district had just a fund balance of over $57 million. You go through debt service, O and M, capital projects, and what's remaining is about 50.2%. And again, just shows it for comparison.
Dr. Engel, just out of curiosity, if you don't know the exact answer, that's okay too. I mean, looking at the minimum fund balance that we hit for that month, in the last trailing 12 months, roughly how many months have we met that minimum balance?
We'll definitely make it for the months of September, October, November, and then after that, after the fall tax money comes in, it just dwindles down quickly. You bring up a good point because that's not really reflective of the lowest point within the month, that's just the month end.
Right.
Which then brings up the month prior, which was May, which the month then, if I remember correctly, was about, what was it, 11, 12 million dollar, and I need fund balance, but the low point was about six, or excuse me, 9.6 million dollars or so. It comes down to daily balances really. So if we're running accounts payable or payroll that week, it drops significantly. So.
Thank you.
Welcome. So here's a treasurer's report. I'm going to go through this, sorry, it's small kind of up there. So year to date right now, as far as all revenues in, and these are the tax receivable revenues in is 65.75 million. Expenditures year to date at 59,117. We're doing okay. Again, it's not finalized, not audited and sure money's going to be moved around a little bit. As far as all revenues right now, revenues year to date, we got in almost everything that we expected except from the state sources. We're at about 97.78%. So a little bit shy on the state sources. Federal was higher than any other year due to the federal assistance that came in, some COVID relief funds as well. Actual year to date, local revenue was also up compared to prior years. And a lot of that had to do with the timing of tax money from last fiscal year to this fiscal year with the delay from the county last May and June. All right, yeah, we can go through the cash. Well, here's the expenditure side. Expenditures across all the board, we're actually almost right on target. We're anywhere between 94 and 97% across the board and that, that's really, I mean, that's one of our better years for like the last three or four years. So we met the expectations and expenditures for this year, even given the COVID hardships and everything else that we had going on for this year. As you can see, the trend line data, we are in blue this year versus red was last year. Again, it's following almost the same kind of, more of a gentle slope towards the end of the year, and then obviously with the large tax influx there in the month of June, but trending very, very similar as last year. So we get the peaks again and then kind of ride out, out and then end of the year, cash comes in again. So revenues so far, this is the month ending for June, we had a little bit over $23 million in revenue, $7.4 million in expenses. We had four tax distributions in the month of June, so it was a rather heavy month coming in from the county. This is for the June 30th end of year. Again, this, these are unaudited numbers, but right now across all funds, we're looking at 72.6 million and right now unaudited expenditures and some will have to be moved. Right now, we're at a little bit north of 66.4. Questions?
No, thank you, Dr. Engel.
Thanks, Mike. Well, a couple other items I wanted to update the board on. First, the last couple meetings, we've had some discussions about just trying to make sure that we put some energy behind our social media efforts and, because we are thin here, but we also wanted to make sure that we start to use the resources that we do have and the people we do have here who are somewhat familiar. And so I asked Dr. Keely if he could just kind of reorganize some of the people who are working here now and try to put some energy. He's just going to update you on what we've been doing on social media and where we hope to go in the future a little bit too.
As you all know, most districts do have a communications person. We do not, which is okay. So as a result, we're going to try to attack the social media. We have multiple administrators with the login and they'll be able to post and it won't be from a personal account, it will be from the Warren account. We're all trying to set a goal, at least what we discussed today is two posts per week. It'll be a little challenging to do that in the summer because there's just not as much going on, especially since we're beyond summer school as well. But once school starts, that's right now tentatively our goal and there are several administrators that will have the logins, Michelle, Rob and I, Chris Giocaris, the assistant principals and the associate principals as well, and, and our athletic department, Amy Lannock. So we're hopefully become more active, hoping to promote what more of what our kids are doing, all the great thing our teachers are doing and our administrators are doing to give the community a better idea of what's going on here daily during the day and also after school.
Couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Thank you for, thank you for these changes and the work that everybody's going to be doing. I appreciate it very much. Two posts per week, I think that's great, even though we're in summer school right now or the summer school timeframe. I have no problem if we go back in history and point out some really great things. You know, we presented a list last week of a lot of great events that happened in the, you know, last couple of months. I think it's still fine if we go back and say, hey, congratulations to these two people who got a perfect ACT score or the football team who did this. I think it's absolutely fine going back in history. Curiosity, what are the rules that we have to follow as far as when we post something using a student's name or their photo? Do we need permissions or anything?
Yeah, there is a process for that. So we're going to stay away from individualized pitchers unless it's more group. If we do want to do an individualized pitcher and have a name associated with that, we do have to make sure that that student did not fill out the form not to be recognized or named in that. And we do have that documented, documented from the parent through Power School.
Okay, but names are okay? Or is it names and photos that we need permission for?
Pitcher. So if me and you were in the pitcher and let's say you were a student and I took your pitcher, Paul Schultz did this great thing today in class. I can't do that without checking on that.
But if you wanted to say, this, this would never have happened. Paul Schultz got a perfect ACT score. That's okay without a photo?
We.
I'd have to take my score times three to reach that, we realize, but just out of curiosity. Okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm just asking because the more names and faces we get out there, the more attention it's going to grasp. And that's part of it. I mean, as a, well, I'm still a parent, but my four kids are gone. There's nothing more exciting than see your kid's name on a website and social media and saying, oh my God, my kid did something great. This is so cool.
It is rare that a student opts out of that.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, it does happen because I, I've experienced it here. So I, out of respect for those parents, we are just cautious about that.
The news, the local newspapers do it all the time. I mean, because they know that equates to subscriptions and readership and all that. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's nice to see whatever you guys decide. I think this effort is great. I'd be curious to see if it works. You guys already have a lot on your plate, but the fact that there's so many kids doing great things and this teacher's doing great things and there's an attempt to get it out there in absence of a communications director, it's kudos for trying. So if it doesn't work, I'd be interested to hear if it doesn't work. Like, hey, offload this because like, you know, but I think it's great that an effort's being made and thanks for bringing it up.
Well, again, if there's seven or eight of us, if we each try to do two a week, it should really flood that area. We think that's going to be reasonable and we think we could hold each other accountable to that. But we've never done communications director's job before. So we'll see until, once school starts.
They try to do it with one voice and when you have a lot of people in there, that'll be curious to see too, if you, you know.
Will, will the staff know who to submit things to? Like, is that an option to let the staff know if anything great is happening in your clubs?
Yeah, Rob and Michelle have, have a good handle on that. That's why, and they, they've done a nice job on their personal Twitter, all their professional Twitter accounts. They've really done a nice job with that and they've held themselves accountable for trying to get something out every week and they do it wonderfully. They're connected to their staff, obviously. Certainly they're connected to their staff on a day-to-day basis more than me. So it's just going to be different, has a different responsibility to a different person, what they're looking for, who they're connected with for that information that they're posting. And obviously the athletic department, Amy and Becky, well, that's going to be a totally different perspective. I mean, they have games and contests that they're at four nights a week. So I mean, they could literally post probably four nights a week easily.
this, reception of visitors we do at the beginning and the end of the meeting? So we're in our board meeting now, we have a number of other presentations with the board.
And actually, if I can make a comment, and I don't mean this to come off in a rude way, but there's some chatter in the audience and it's hard for me to focus. So if there's like sidebar conversation, if you don't mind just moving into the hallway, it's, I'm trying to focus on, it's, you know, some of us have a lifelong challenge with attention deficit. So it helps me and it might help a couple other people if some of the sidebars are either just quieted a little or just taken in the hallway. Thank you.
By the way, for the board members, most of the presentations that we're having tonight, including Mike's and some that we'll have in a few minutes here, are also in your board docs material. So keep that in mind that if, when we start going through a presentation or two in a few minutes, if the text on the screen is too small, you should have everything that we're going to show you also in front of you in your device. So keep that in mind. Couple of notes before we turn into some other action items in the reports. I just want to make sure the board was aware, we did send in a rough draft to the village for the keeping posted, so we're waiting for them to turn back around what they have as their first draft for their village newsletter. Also, a Warren, our July edition of the Warren Connection should be going out this week. We utilize this time as we review our strategic plan each year. We've actually done that, the timings worked out really well, so we can share with our community through our Warren Connection, some of the stories that we'll talk about later on tonight here. Also, there was a question from a board member about the Gurney Days Parade on Sunday, August the 8th, about whether we have any interest in going. We haven't, we haven't gone regularly over my time here anyway. We were more involved with the Centennial, but certainly if there are any board members interested in participating, we can make that happen. So if there's even one, we can make it happen. But we, part of this was just whether or not, I'm, I'm just trying to look for a little direction and whether or not there's anyone and if there is, we'll register accordingly with, with the Park District for the parade.
Let's be social, guys. Oh, you are?
Yeah.
It's your business.
Can't be two places. It's a blast.
Paul.
I was going to tell that weekend.
Oh, stop it.
I'll show you the.
It's the eighth, the eighth at noon.
The parade is on the eighth.
Yeah. Yeah, anybody who's not here.
Bring in the parade and obviously then we'll have people coming and going, but we'll work it. So thanks Natalia for that, for that prompt when we sent out that reminder about the different way the Gurney Days is happening. Finally, a couple other just reminders of dates. August 10th, we do have a policy meeting, tentatively it's at six o'clock. So if you're on the policy committee, all are welcome, but if you're on the policy committee, that meeting will start at six on the, at six o'clock on the 10th, followed by we have our third and final summer finance committee meeting at seven o'clock on that day. So we tried to do that intentionally. So if board members want to attend both, you can, but the, and the August 17th date is our next real board meeting after tonight. And so later on, we talk a little bit about referendum stuff, that finance committee, which is on August 10th, a week before the August 17th board meeting, might be a nice time for the board. The board needs to come to some consensus on any issues for us to do that. So the timing of that works well for August 10th, for those two committee meetings and August 17th for our next board meeting after tonight. That's all I have in the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Algrim. Next up is the consent agenda. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda? If not, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which include exhibit A, personnel recommendations, numbers one through 14 as posted, and exhibit B, athletics and activities, personnel recommendations, number 1B as posted, the payment of the bills for July 20th, 2021 in the amount of $9,651,258.05 and the regular and executive session minutes of June 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez, Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mrs. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez and Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Next up is new business.
The first item for new business, we are going to provide the board some information on in regards to our strategic plan. We'll try to do this as efficiently as we can. We have a number of people here who are just going to take small parts of this presentation. And obviously, one of the things to keep in mind is with this report, we're going to talk a little bit about some things we did this year, talk some things, some, a little bit about our greatness indicators and talk a little bit about next year. But there's not, we'll, we'll keep it pretty concise in regards to our reporting. These guys are ready to do this for our administrative team. Just want to start by reminding the board and our community that our strategic plan is on our website. On the front of it is our mission, our beliefs and formula for success. We also this year have a page in our strategic plan that just kind of refers to the fact that because of COVID, you know, some of the numbers or some of the data that we've been tracking over this past school year, you know, it's might not be either valid or even available in some cases. And so we'll kind of go through that when we go through our greatness indicators briefly. And then what we have is our first goals and timelines. And I think Mr. Giocaris is going to just highlight a little bit first, under the curriculum instruction and assessment page, some of the highlights in our work from 2021.
Thank you. So we had five goals on, that we were working on 2021. Looking at the first, a lot of these were ongoing work that were spanning over three or four, even five years. One is Spanish language arts program to get that updated and be ready to provide a new type of curriculum for our native Spanish speakers as well as the dual language students from Woodland, coming to us from Woodland. That goal is complete and we are excited that we are beginning that new program, our Spanish language arts and culture program will begin this upcoming school year. The next one about increasing our dual credit access, that was put on hold due to the pandemic. We were, had a lot of momentum in that going in during the 2019, 2020 school year and we're looking at picking that up again this year. We're excited about continuing our work in science as well as some industrial technology and potentially business courses for increasing our dual credit opportunities. Goal number three, really focused on a lot of the remote learning instruction, professional development that we needed undertake last year with the shift to remote and hybrid instruction, that, that work is complete. Completing, the next is implementing the collection method. The state is now requiring that we collect college and career readiness indicators from students about how, if they're holding employment or different volunteer activities that they participate in while enrolled in high school. That's a part of our state reporting. Worked with Dr. Kirk and Student Services to get that up and running in Power School. That work was finished. And then the next piece is we've been, we want to start working even more following that idea of college and career readiness, helping our students find the identified career pathways and then promoting opportunities for those students either at a tech, tech campus or even through our own courses here. And so if they have an identified career of interest, we can help to put together academic plans and experiences to help them be as prepared for those careers as possible coming out of high school. We'll be continuing that work this year.
Thanks, Chris, Michelle.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. We had three primary goals under student advocacy.
Good evening. We had three primary goals under student advocacy. Our goal to finalize our advisory curriculum and model is on hold due to that it's funding dependent. And so we have to work on that in the future. The second goal on identifying and utilizing interventions to increase our freshman on track is ongoing and really interventions was a huge focus for us last year during the pandemic. And there were a variety of interventions used everywhere from one on one interventionist to a variety of courses in Canvas and remedial opportunities for students who are struggling. Our third goal on facilitating the potential of the College of Lake County Navigator position, that goal was met and that position is in place at Almond, working with our college and career counselors and families.
Thanks, Michelle. The next area is shared leadership. And in this area, we had three goals. We do have, by the way, we kind of wrapped up, but they're going to hear a little bit more about our diversity, equity and inclusion plan later, at least the work we had been doing. We kind of wrapped that piece of it up and it was, it is on our district website, Portrait of a Graduate. That's complete. You're going to hear more about that later. And also, we did last summer and into last year, obviously, use pandemic preparedness advisory committees to try to navigate the pandemic and enhanced health requirements to the best we can. We'll obviously continue doing that into the next school year. Unfortunately, we still are dealing with those same issues to a lesser degree. Next is Dr. Keely.
Okay, my area was student life. The first goal was the transition center, which was complete. They were moved in. Last year being a disjointed year, we learned some things that we still have to manipulate over there. We're hoping to learn that much quicker this year. We still might have to manipulate things, but right now everything is running smooth out there. They definitely have space. I'm sure we'll be adding some few things here and there as they grow into that space. The second goal was to continue to develop and implement strategies to support Senate Bill 100, including restorative practices and professional development for staff. Obviously, last year was a very disjointed year. It's very difficult to provide that professional development to staff. So that will be ongoing this year, of course, and we'll have much more opportunity to do that being in person, starting the school year off. The last goal was complete the Almond, O'Plane Campus Student Courtyard improvement progress. That goal was not met due to funding, so it's on hold. Once there is funding in place, we're looking at making those courtyards more usable for our students and staff. Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rob.
Thank you. Good evening. Under the community and communication, we had four goals that we identified for the 2021 school year. The first one was just to explore multilingual platforms for improved communication with families. And that goal is ongoing. We currently utilize clerical support staff and the Donovan group to translate many of the communications into Spanish language, but not all languages. So we're continuing to try and work on that. Our website has the capability to translate information into multiple language, multiple languages and just kind of looking into the future, additional support and or technologies would need some additional funding for us to continue some of that work, looking into some of the different platforms that are out there. The second goal was to continue to work with the foundation to provide support in establishing an alumni association. This goal is currently on hold as the Alumni Association would need a structure from the WTHS Foundation Resources and Time. We also were looking to explore and develop alternative avenues to communicate daily announcements to students and or parents. That goal is complete. The transition to some video production of student weekly announcements and the posting announcements on the website occurred during the 2021 school year. Continued efforts will be made with our student groups to continue producing announcements in video format. And then the last one was to explore and develop a planning, or excuse me, a plan for increasing district presence on social media. We talked about that a little bit earlier, but this goal is definitely ongoing. We have better utilized the Donovan group to help us with the Facebook posts to better reach parents and increase our Facebook presence and other media platforms with students. And obviously, Pat presented a little bit which is some of the continued work and efforts that we're trying on our end to increase our efforts on social media. Thank you.
Rob. All right. On securing the future, we're continuing to implement the green initiatives, including LED lighting and the completion of the solar project over at the Almond Campus. The solar field is officially up and running and will be celebrated in its first 12 months at the end of this month, actually. We've also received some SREC credits and some solar inverter rebates that we have received already. The second one was to regularly review the current and future year budget worksheets. We've been keeping those five year budget projections, both expenditures and revenues up to date on an ongoing basis and have been doing that financial projections up to date. And at the every regularly finance committee meeting, been broadcasting it out. The next one was to continue to facilitate the dialogue regarding the tax referendum and tax rate of the potential referendum that's needed. Again, this goal will be ongoing and we'll have to discuss it for the potential referendum question for the 22 primary election coming up. The next one is to continue and identify the potential funding sources to support the construction of the new locker rooms over at the O'Plane Campus. Again, this will be ongoing. It's kind of seems to be a theme of tonight until funding is made available for it. It'll be on hold. The last one was the completion of the roof repair projects at both campuses. I have good news. This goal actually did get completed. The roof repairs were done and we have not had any leaks like the last couple of weeks and knock on wood here. So we have one of those knocked out.
So two questions on these. On the fifth one, on the roof repairs, we've repaired the roast, but we still need a long term solution in place, correct?
Correct. We've patched and we've repaired. However, we need roof replacement. Right. And right now we've extended the life of the roof a little bit more, but this is yeah, there's no avoiding it. I mean, they need to be.
That's just for new board members. And we've talked about this in the past when we talked about it again, the new locker rooms at the O'Plane Campus. A year or so ago, we actually took a tour of the locker rooms. And for people who've never been in the locker rooms at that campus, it seems like we want to upgrade it so they look really nice and fancy. We just want to upgrade them so it doesn't look like a borderline health hazard. I mean, so it's not like a nice to have. It's something we really need to do. But again, no, no funding available.
Thanks, Mike. One thing that I did want to, I just remembered that on August 10th, on that finance committee, just speaking about the budget for next year, when Mike was talking about projections, at that finance committee meeting, one of the things we will do is the board will have their first look at the FY22 budget, which will then at the following meeting, it'll also kind of be posted. So just keep that in mind. I forgot to mention earlier that on August 10th, board members will have a first look at the FY22 budget. Next thing we want to do is very quickly, Chris and I are just going to highlight some of the numbers. We don't have very many of our greatness indicators filled in. We do have some. We just want to make sure that we bring the board's attention. Some things we were able to gather from last year, although even more than half of these data points are probably not, we are, they're just not able for us to gather. So go ahead, Chris.
And just to draw to your attention under the data source, if it says CSY minus one, that means last, not the current school year minus one. So it's not the 2021 school year. That's data from a year ago, just in terms of how some of these reports become available from different college board or from ISB is after the summer. So that's why it's a year in delay. So starting with our high graduation rate, that's again, this is our 20 class of 2020. 94% of our students graduated, which is consistent with our past performance. Our freshman on track was 88.9% at the end of the 1920 school year, which is you can see is a significant increase from the year before that. And that's a large, do a large part to Mrs. Bertola and her teams work with that freshman class during the 1920 school year. Our SAT scores, you notice a lot of the, all the growth ones, we do not have data for because, because of the pandemic, our students have not, our freshmen and sophomores have not taken the PSAT nine or PSAT 10 for two years. But we did just receive our SAT scores from this past spring from our juniors. And our average evidence based reading and writing is was an average score of 517. So if you notice there, that's not too far off from where we were at in 2019, so over two years ago. And our math score is a 504. And again, that's down from a 529. But again, that's not a catastrophic drop in terms of an average score when you with SA with SAT scores. So those are, and those are our current kids that just finished up their junior year. So that's a great job by our kids for putting out the best efforts and our teachers for getting them ready for those exams. So we're going to skip down to high percentage of enrollments and honors and AP classes. This is current this year, 24% of our students were enrolled in at least one AP or honors class. Actually, let me rephrase that. Out of all of our course enrollments, 24% of our students were enrolled in a, in an AP or honors class. AP successful participation rate. So and this is again, last year in the class of 2020, percentage of our students who took and passed an AP exam, took an AP class and passed the corresponding exam during their high school career is 42.3% of the class of 2020. So almost half our students took and passed an AP exam while enrolled at Warren. Our AP success rate last year, 87% of our exams were passed that were taken. And we do not have, we did not MAP test this year, again, because we were remote in the fall and that was not a priority for us. MAP testing wasn't a priority. We are more concerned with making sure we are working with our students in social, emotional learning and academic instruction rather than reading growth, growth, growth metrics. And then increasing our summer school enrichment enrollments, 10.5% of our summer, of our summer school enrollment was for enrichment this year. And I'm going to turn over to John to talk about high levels of satisfaction.
Yeah, just a couple of points on those next sections. One is our, we were actually pretty happy with the fact that our athletic participation this year, even through, you know, as we got into it, kids did participate, coaches did a good job reaching out to people and the word got out there and parents did a great job getting students up here. So we still had 30.5% of our students participating in athletics, down a little bit, but all things considered, it was still in 30s. And really, that's pretty good work. And on the second group of those, second page, if you will, those numbers, they're generally speaking, the only one, we still were able to track the fact that we had recognition events by the board and of 17 of those and 35 governmental partnerships, 11 exemplary programs. So we've identified those things. There's a lot of numbers there though, that to be honest with you, they're just last year was a, not a great year for us to even try to gather some of that data. Want to make sure, and we've talked a few things about this, the last piece of our strategic plan really talks about what's driving our work into next year. We touched on the lead bees just a bit, but in curriculum, Chris, what are the three things we're working on?
I touched on these briefly. Actually, two of these I touched, touched on, we are going to continue to work on growing that dual credit program. That's something that's really not at a cost to the district. That's just working with CLC and working through teacher certifications and coursework and and our curriculum and CLC's curriculum to, to do that. We're going to really target science, business and industrial technology. We're going to keep working on that. It's usually about a two to three year process to get that implemented. The next one is, as I talked about earlier, the career pathways and trying to tie career interest to students academic programming. And then the last one is really taking a look at our grading practices with staff to really ensure that our grades are true reflection of student learning and academic growth. We learned a lot through the past year and a half of the pandemic. We've had a lot of really good discussions about grading practices and equity, and we want to continue that work and formalize some recommendations for our staff.
Michelle.
Okay, under student advocacy, we are going to be implementing our elementary and secondary school emergency relief, otherwise known as ESER funds for our academic intervention mentoring. We're calling it AIM program. You're going to hear more about that from Dr. Keely. We also are going to be implementing REACH, which stands for Recover, Educate, Achieve, Coach and Honor for freshman students to get academic support and work on executive functioning skills. You'll hear more about that later as well. We want to continue to utilize interventions for our at risk students and we are going to continue our focus on interventions to make sure our freshmen are on track and getting the credits they need for a solid start to their high school career.
Thanks, Michelle. We, tonight, you'll hear a little bit more later about investing in additional equity initiatives. And so you'll, you'll hear about that as it relates to our diversity, inclusion and equity plan, Portrait of a Graduate, which is now called the Warren Way. We're going to start sharing that with our community and our staff and our students. You're going to hear a little bit more about a couple of slides later about that. We wanted to make sure the board had a little bit more detail on the Warren Way because you were part of the initiation of that process. And then the third one is to continue to monitor enhanced health requirements as we get them from the Illinois State Board of that and implement them appropriately and accordingly. Pat.
In student life, again, we'll continue to develop and implement those Senate by 100 strategies that supports our restorative practices in giving PD to our staff. Again, this year we'll be much more successful with that being in person. Second thing, we're kind of auditing our student groups, particularly our identity or cultural groups. Those ebb and flow as years go, clubs are real popular, certain clubs, some clubs, and they're not as popular and another club wants to be popular or a new club comes about. So we're looking in that area, looking if we can condense them not to take away those clubs to have them work together and structure and kind of connect with some of our equity initiatives, particularly with our cultural or identify, identity groups. So we're looking forward to work with that. I know Ms. Bertola and Mr. Barrett and Ms. Lannergill work very collaboratively with that. Last utilized, I think you've heard a lot about this, our seamless summer food service option for students this year. That will be a change. We look forward to that. We hope that's popular. We hope it works well, our procedures and our kids moving in and out of lunchroom. We're hoping that that will be successful.
Thank you.
Me. And then we've identified a couple of areas under community and communication, which would be to kind of like I spoke earlier, but to continue to investigate the multilingual capacity of the district website and or other district notification systems. And the second one was to explore and develop a plan for increasing district presence on social media. We're really going to focus on those two areas during this upcoming school year.
All right. For securing the future, as we stated before, we're going to continue to identify potential funding sources to support the construction of the new locker rooms at the O'Plane Campus. We're going to continue to regularly review the current and future years budget worksheets to analyze any changes, any new sources of revenue and expenditures and make adjustments accordingly. And have this up and pretty much updated every time we meet. It would be the five year projections rolling forward. And lastly is to continue to discuss with the community, the potential referendum question for the 2022 primary election that would be coming up.
So we're, I'm going to, if I could, there's still a few things with the strategic plan. There's three presentations that we were going to show the board tonight. I'm going to carve one of them out and Dr. Keely has agreed to do it at our next regular meeting. It was on interventions. It is important information. But we're just because that one's a little bit, no problem pulling that off till our next meeting. We'll, we'll circle back on that. The other two, because there are only two slides each, I do want to make sure that we at least give the board an opportunity to hear two pieces related to our equity work as well as then the Warren Way. Just want to make sure that the board hears this because this will, this will, you know, start to have some legs. Some of these will start to have legs early on. So I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, I think, to kick off our equity slides.
Okay. So just a brief report on our diversity, equity and inclusion work. I think it's really important. We define these terms in our diversity, equity, inclusion plan. And as referenced earlier, diversity has always been an asset of our district, something we value and something we're really hard to create an inclusive welcoming environment where students feel safe, valued and feel like they belong. Equity is sometimes the word of the three that gets misunderstood. And I think the most straightforward answer that really guides our work is that we are looking to service all of our students, meeting their needs, both academically and socially, every day, every student, every day. And so our commitments in this work are on the left there, district, continuous learning and structural planning advocacy and amplifying voices. Really proud of some of the work we did last year, even though it was challenging to meet every student's needs every day during a pandemic in both hybrid and remote settings. So I'm just going to highlight some of the things that we did last year. A lot of the district level work was the pandemic prepared work to prepare for a remote model and a hybrid model and all the work that went into that. We had continuous professional development to help our staff in those transitions and a lot of professional development really rooted in social, emotional learning, being very cognizant and aware of, you know, that, that social, emotional piece and concern that we had for our students last year, instructional programming, a variety of things that were done, our continued work on diversifying curriculum, opening up our ninth grade course selection, really trying to educate students and families on the courses they want to be in to start high school. Lot of interventions. We were, we got students identified and in the building when we could to really. to really provide that supervised remote to students who needed it, provided evening virtual study tables, provided hotspots to students and families that needed internet access, reviewed grading practices to really support students during the pandemic, provided under advocacy, a lot of interventions for struggling students, provided meals for students and families. Really proud of the house visits that we did that really increased last year for wellness checks and academic and emotional support for our families. And provided virtual, our, we tried our best to provide mentoring for incoming freshmen through a virtual mentoring program. Amplifying voices, I think you heard from Bryson King earlier in the year on one of the things that meant a lot to him and I can tell you myself personally and staff reached out, it's probably one of the most meaningful professional development we ever had and experiences. We had a student panel where we had a variety of students and they shared experiences and challenges and things with staff and that was really very powerful. And we continue to meet with student groups and get that insight and leadership from our variety of cultural groups. So really proud of our work last year. Looking ahead to this year, our plan is also organized by those same commitments. One of the goals at the district level is to develop board policy on diversity, equity, inclusion. That's in your packet and that'll be discussed at a future policy meeting to establish reporting metrics to keep us accountable and to be able to evaluate our success. That is on the right-hand side of the plan. So you can see some of those things we've identified that we're going to hold ourselves accountable to and regularly regularly monitor and report on. Continuing our professional development with staff, instructional programming, continue to examine grading practices. Mr. Parrot's going to talk about our, the Warren Way, which really ties together most of these components and we're really excited to launch that this year and and develop better tier one, which is in classroom everyday strategies for students. The advocacy, implementing those intervention programs mentioned earlier, and you'll hear more from Dr. Healy next meeting on. And then continuing to amplify voices with, we have staff diversity, equity, inclusion team of over 40 staff members. We're going to continue to involve students and we'll still have our parent diversity committee, but just continuing to hear voices and drawing all stakeholders into that work. So we're very excited. And are there any questions?
Board members have any questions about what we're doing with equity?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, the next one, we want to make sure the board starts has a first look, if you will, at some of the work that's been done for two years now on our portrait of a graduate. I'm going to turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, Dr. Algrim. Very excited to just put this slide up here. This is the culmination of two plus years of work that really our staff, our students, our community, our board, administration, you know, just the entire Warren community has worked on whether they really know it or not over the last two years. When we've talked about the strategic plan and the work that's in that, we know that there's a lot of important work in there, but it's often at a higher adult level. It's very formal. And I think something that we've recognized is we've, we've kind of talked about, but what do we want our students to be when they leave here, right? Like, how does that translate kind of at the student level or the classroom level? And so one of the things that's out there is what they call a portrait of a graduate. And so we've done a lot of work around that and initially we're calling it that. And through all this work and refinement and stuff that we've done, we've developed and settled on what we're really referring to as the Warren Way. And it's the culmination of a lot of work. It started back in 2019 when we had our opening faculty come in for the first few days, institute days, and started to talk with them about what we wanted our, our students to be while they were here and once they left, you know, kind of what we wanted them to be when they left Warren High School. So we've culminated a lot of information, put it in the hopper, sifted through that. And what we came up with, it was a play on Warren and using the acronym and what we believed in three words kept coming to the top. And they were being our students being respectful, being resilient and being engaged. And so we found a creative way to get those to play right into Warren, obviously in kind of the marketing of it. So when we're talking about this, what we want all of our students to be, we're talking about them that we are respectful, resilient, engaged now and always. And that's kind of how we should live day to day. And so when you think about being respectful, you think about valuing diversity and learning from others and their about their cultures and their experiences, that we show empathy and kindness to others, that we communicate and collaborate in an effective and positive way and we establish healthy relationships. And we talk about our students being resilient, we talk about them working hard and giving their best effort, that they reflect, learn and adapt based on their experiences and challenges, that they make courageous and responsible decisions and lead healthy and balanced lifestyles. And when we talk about them being engaged, we talk about them owning their learning, being accountable for their actions, they explore their interests, set meaningful goals and prepare to excel for life after high school. We also want them to participate in our school, local and global community. And we want them to think critically and develop creative problem solving skills. And those are things that we would want for our students now and things that they can carry on in life. So what we're really focused on during this upcoming school year is we welcome students back is having a common language that we can use at both campuses with our students and staff about who we are, what we believe in and what we want them to be now and always. So, you know, at Warren Township High School, we believe that we can make a difference in our lives, community and world by being those three things, being respectful, responsible. Excuse me, respectful, resilient and engaged. Responsible came up in a lot of our conversation. So the the previous slide, which it's okay, you don't have to go back. The previous slide is just an example of kind of some of the marketing that we're coming up with, you know, we're kind of developing some different looks to that so that we can get some posters and, you know, all those kind of fun things that you would market this around the building. The great thing is, is we kind of played this out and had conversations with our staff, this started to kind of lend itself to kind of a behavior matrix or things that we can take into the classroom. And so our student services teams really started to identify things that we would say to our students, how we want them to behave and act when they're in these different locations. So if they're in the classroom or if they're in common areas or restrooms or at an activity onsite or offsite, these are the things that we would expect you to do and how you would act in those situations and how you would demonstrate being respectful, resilient, resilient and engaged in all those situations. So it becomes a nice language for our teachers to use with our students all the time. And it's something that we can use across campuses. I know Mrs. Bertola and I are very excited to get this rolled out. We were excited to just present it here. It's much more layered probably than I can do it justice in, you know, these five minutes or so. But I think you're going to continue to hear the Warren Way come up and hopefully it's something that you can carry with you as board members, you know, when we talk about what we want to be here at Warren Township High School, you know, we want our, our students and our community to be respectful, resilient and engaged. So this is kind of the kickoff to the Warren Way. We are, the first three weeks of school, we have a lot of activities planned with our staff and students centered around this entire concept to kick off the 2021, 22 school year. So we're excited to get that started. So questions, I don't know that.
No, this is awesome stuff. Thank you for everyone's work on this.
And so that was a little condensed, but generally we just tried to give the board enough information about our strategic plan from last year and moving forward into this year. And that's the first item in new business for the board's consideration.
Approval of the amendment to the 2021, 22 student parent handbook.
Well, we do, let's see. So we do need an item, one, Mr. Schultz.
I'm sorry.
You're okay. If we can have an action item.
Yep.
To approve.
One idea. I move to approve the strategic plan report 2021 addendum and the 2021, 22 goals and timelines.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Thanks. Next item is just very quickly, we've got some amendment to our handbook, Dr. Keely.
Annually, you know, we adjust and recommend revisions to our handbook. It's summarized on that first page, as I believe you have, very kind of mundane changes that you would expect. Obviously, the first part is chapter two, there's a change for our school calendar and our camp spell schedules. Chapter eight, we talked about this at a board meeting, how we've changed our graduation requirements, where we're going from 22 and a half to 18 and a half. So that is also in our handbook and that was changed again, going along with what the board had approved. Chapter 15, again, our normal annual changes or adjustments based on the IHSA and key provisions regarding IHSA rules, that was updated. And last, just our typical parent notifications that are in the handbook, anything that's new or anything that's adjusted in those notifications, whether that be a name change of a program, that is in chapter 17. So nothing of real substance changing in that handbook that is of major significance, other than our normal routine annual updates.
Questions from the board? I move to approve amendment number one to the 2021, 22 student parent handbook.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Next item is an employee resignation agreement.
Questions on this? I move to approve the resignation agreement and general release for Nadine Robbins.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Next up is another resignation agreement. Does the board have any questions on it? I move to approve the resignation agreement and general release for patients Mechanico.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte? Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Up is the approval of training services.
Like you want to remind the board of the last couple of months of this?
Correct. Over the last couple of months, board had previously approved, working with Athletico management. However, we could not come to legal agreement with their terms of their contract and conditions within. The next reasonable lowest price one was Illinois Bone and Joint, who we had originally wanted to go with, but they submitted a little bit later on in time. And that's for this evening's consideration with Illinois Bone and Joint. It'd be $126,000 the first year, second year and third year.
And we have accounted for the fact that just in regards to our need for trainers based on the athletic program that we may or may not be offering over the next couple of years. That's in the stipulated in the contract, Mike.
Correct. So if we need them for this year and not for next year, that that's taken care of as well.
Questions? Move to reconsider the Athletico Management LLC contract. Further, I move to authorize the administration to enter in a contract with the Illinois Bone and Joint Institute for athletic training services, subject to approval of appropriate terms and consultation with legal counsel.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Next up is our five-year beverage proposal.
Again, it's a five-year, this year or for this five-year term, it's going to be a little bit different. It's actually going to give the cafeteria a little bit more choice other than just Pepsi products. This is Pepsi's now being limited to just vending. They will also have a presence in the cafeteria. But we also wanted to open up the selection of beverages to Coke and 7-Up products. And and the key word was muscle milk as well, because it seems to be very popular. This follows all of the guidelines as far as the nutritional program and our non-energy drinks and things of that nature, follows the our wellness policy, if you will. So this is a five-year agreement with PepsiCo for the bodily and services for our vending machines. Any questions?
Motion to authorize the administration to enter in a contract with Bottling Group LLC for vending machine beverages, subject to approval of appropriate terms and consultation with legal counsel.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte? Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Mike, do you want to review the lease agreement with Peterson Green Farms?
Have with Peterson Farms, it's escalated by the prior December CPI. This is for the, I'm going to call it farm year slash calendar year 2022 that we approved now in 2021 because they need to harvest the crop and then get the soil prepared and everything ready for next farming season in the fall. So the dollar amounts here reflect the CPI increase within there. And it's from January 1st, 2022 through the end of December.
Move to approve land lease agreement as presented with Peterson Grain Farmers beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Mike.
This last one here is just a reauthorization for resolution for us to participate in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund that's managed by the state.
Questions? If not, I move to reauthorize the resolution for treasurer's participation in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund, the ISDLAF.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte? Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Bring us on to old business.
Well, doing these last two items in old business are non-action items. We just wanted to make sure that we're the board was at least updated where some of the conversation was from this evening. And if Dr. Keely come just review with the board, the communication that we got from the State Board of Education on or about July 9th.
Again, nothing has changed, just like as the John has sent out the letter to our families and certainly the board. This is word for word verbatim from ISB to follow the CDC guidance. This isn't real clear. I think all schools are struggling with this. We're hoping to get some more updated information or more specific information. But we have not received that yet. So we are just in a holding pattern with exactly what the state and recommended for us to do.
Can you just read through those pages to make sure?
Bullet point one is massively required only for individuals who are not fully vaccinated. Social distancing of at least three feet or rather than six feet will be maintained between students in the classroom, but not if it would be a barrier to in-person learning. Excuse me, remote instruction made available to students who have not been vaccinated or who are not eligible for a vaccine only while they are under quarantine, quarantined consistent with the guidance of or requirements of Lake County Health Department or IDPH.
So a couple of questions for you that, I mean, we've taken no action on this, so we're still waiting for further guidance, correct? This is kind of how we interpret the current guidelines. So the last bullet point, because this has been a topic about who would or would not be under quarantine, we would probably, we would follow whatever the Lake County Department of Health recommends.
Correct.
Yeah, we talked through that, Pat, just remind a little bit what happens with the.
How it works if a student calls us and tells us, hey, I've been told to quarantine 10 days, 14 days, whatever it is at that time, no problem. It could be verified by through Lake County Health Department. Typically, the student has something in writing or we can verify through Lake County Health Department. And then that's the case, then we would provide instruction to the home to make sure that that student was caught up and not penalized for being in our quarantine order.
What, what about the first bullet where you wear masks if you're not fully vaccinated? Are we, I mean, do we keep record of that?
There has been no direction from ISB currently. Currently, right now, it's on the honor system.
So at what point is the administration, the board, going to finalize what we would like to have in place before school opens up? Is this something we vote on at the next board meeting? Is it something the administration comes up?
Generally, we've been, generally, we've been abiding by the guidance just because we might get something the week before school starts, as we learned last year. And I do think that the state wanted to come out with something a little earlier this summer. I think people were, you know, schools were starting to say, hey, please don't wait until right by August the eighth to give us information. Please tell us, whatever you know, please tell us what you know, so we can start to communicate what we think the expectations are going to be. This is what we got out from the state. This is where they're at right now in regards to fully vaccinated, people are not required to wear masks, but if you're, they're not fully vaccinated, individuals are. So that's how, we haven't, you know, people immediately started coming up with procedural things like, well, what if, what does that mean for schools? Do they check? Do they not check? And there's been a lot of conversation about that. We don't, you know, on our end right now, we're hoping to get more questions answered. But we also know that, you know, if we don't get any other questions answered, like, we'll start to find ways to implement this information. We also know that right now, we've been, like, we do know students who are vaccinated. We don't necessarily have a list of those that our nurses do on a need-to-know basis on their medical information. And so when there's been close quarantines and things of that nature, or close contacts, and people are trying to figure out whether somebody needs to be quarantined, in the case where somebody's vaccinated, right, the quarantining is a non-issue. So there's pieces where that our nurses do have that vaccination information, but right now, that's where it is. We don't, you know, we, the other thing is some parents gave us that information in Power School, I believe, or we asked.
Some students, some parents were submitting that through Power School. Certainly, if they submit a shot record, if they were vaccinated, it's going to be on there. It will be in eye care. That's not something I have access to, obviously. It's a health record. Our nurse would, and only our nurse, not the administration, we wouldn't have the ability to look at that.
So I'm going to ask you some questions or statements I know we've talked about in the past. So keeping track of whether or not a student has taken a COVID vaccine is not a violation of HIPAA, because it's a vaccine, correct?
That's correct. It would just be in their shot record.
Okay, we're not mandating students to get a vaccine in order to.
We are not.
If it gets in the way with proper education, we're not, we're going to follow the guidelines. And so we don't have to say six feet apart, because in-person learning is more important.
That's correct. That has, that has been pretty clear, even in there, even in ISB statements, not regarding this, but it just in general. Don't want to be a barrier to full in-person learning. That's been clear.
I'm glad they changed it, that if a student quarantines, they get remote instruction, because previously, they weren't allowing that.
That's correct.
That's huge.
The language debt, that third bullet did change, because originally, and that's what we said, like, well, someone's quarantined, like, there's no more remote learning. That's what we were told. That obviously changes game, which is no problem. We'll comply with whatever, you know.
So just as curiosity, what would, have you talked about what would happen? Is there going to be, like, is the teacher going to prompt their laptop? And the student's going to see them through a Google Meet? Or is this something that is recorded separately, and then it's available on Canvas?
We're going to leverage our learning management systems very heavily, with kids know where to get it, particularly going through what they just went through for the past year and a half. So I'm not overly concerned about the content and the material and kids understanding how to access that. What's going to get trickier is the live instruction and providing a substitute teacher to comply with some of that live instruction. In addition, Mr. Giukaris has set up through the Estor Grants to have nighttime one-on-one or nighttime tutoring and content areas, in addition to looking at how we can get some tutoring during the school day as well. So I think it's going to be a combination of all that. But is it going to be, I'm the teacher of a class, I got a couple of kids on quarantine, I have twenty in front of me and three on quarantine. Am I doing what I did last year? Absolutely not. I'm not teaching the kids at home and the kids in front of me. That's not going to happen.
Can remote instruction be just making materials available to the student who's not in class? It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to turn on their laptop and see the class. It means we're making a structural materials available to these students.
And some type of staff member they can access during the school day, during that particular schedule period. Those are all the things that we can, we can, it can.
Very, very similar to pre-COVID-type things if a student was out a week or so.
Like, similar to when a student goes on vacation during, you know, a non-vacation, school vacation week.
Correct. That's correct.
Then my last question, I'm sure I'll have more later on, but masks are required only for individuals who are not fully vaccinated? And how are we going to or not going to verify?
Right now, it's on the honor system. The only way you could do that is if you mandated them showing proof. That's currently not what ISB is telling, saying to do. And that is not what that statement says. It is the honor system, very similar to certification that we did all along. It was always the honor system. We no longer will have temperature scanners at the door for students to take a temperature. That's supposed to be done at home. That's a parent's responsibility. That's not ours.
Bunch of scanners are gone. How about?
Yeah, well, that's just good practice.
Absolutely.
Schools should have done that years ago.
Yeah, no issues with that at all.
Correct.
Okay.
We're still waiting, you know, we're ready if we need to start school tomorrow. We're, you know, we've talked about lunches. We've talked about what lunches would have looked like last year, with six feet apart and, you know, facing the same direction. Because, you know, so we've talked through that scenario. We've also talked, well, what if we get guidance that, nope, the cafeteria is just like a classroom, and it comes down now to three feet, can we get them closer? We're still having, we still are waiting for more direction from the state to hopefully give us a little more direction on more specific areas of the building, more specific protocol and questions. But we did want to make sure that we at least started to share this information with people, so.
Any other questions by other board members?
For lunch, would you space them out into the, like, the gym, say at Almond, or?
If we have to, we will do that. The fieldhouse at Almond, fieldhouse at Alpine, we will do that. We have tables. We have extra tables. We have chairs. We have a plan for that. We have a plan for in. Like Chuck and Laura, or Mr. Mauer and Dr. Kirk have been very busy talking about the different type of options. Hopefully, we're just in the cafeteria. That would be the best case.
So that's still a potential possibility, that we're just in the cafeteria life as.
Correct. We have a couple of different scenarios, just like John had said, six feet, three feet, only facing one way, three feet facing both ways. Cafeteria split up between cafeteria and gym, cafeteria, fieldhouse. So we're just, that's one, like John had said, he's absolutely correct, is ISB, because that was very specific guidance last year to us.
Right.
Which caused a challenge for schools, and it will for high schools. It will continue to cause a challenge for high schools. The K8s, they just stayed in their classroom, that lower numbers, bigger rooms, not a problem. High schools, it's a problem. At Almond or Alpine, you might have five hundred kids assigned to a lunch bar. That is very challenging to carry out a six-foot requirement. It's very challenging to do.
As always, appreciate everything you guys have been doing with this topic.
Thanks, Dr. Keely. And the last thing, we just wanted to make sure we get on to a few talking points. So Mike talked a little bit about the finance committee meeting, which happened last week. There was some conversation about referendum amounts, and we reviewed, I want to remind the board that we tried to just share two scenarios. But obviously, there's a lot more scenarios other than just a thirty-five cent or a sixty-cent scenario that we can help, you know, prior to August tenth or August seventeenth, we can help craft that for the board, based on whatever you guys are feeling are priorities. And, you know, and I also want to make sure that, to reiterate, I did verify the question that came up about the survey to the community again. I tried to say at that meeting, I did verify, we can't do that. It's not appropriate. It violates the ethics policy, because it is considered political activity after you've already said we're going for a referendum, if you will. Prior, prior to our last referendum efforts, the stuff that we did early on was prior to any commitment to a referendum question. So it was okay. But at this point in time, I did confirm that a survey, you know, wouldn't be appropriate. And we probably, as somebody I think had mentioned too, probably didn't even know that we would have time to do that, even if it were. So that at least comes off the table as an option. And just again, August tenth, we have a finance committee meeting, August seventeenth, board meeting. We didn't want to leave it open just for board members to talk. Mr. Schultz, I believe.
Yeah, it's good to know that we can't do another survey. It would be nice to have that data, but we can't, so at least we don't have to think about that. A couple of comments. I know I sent some information out to people just to get your thoughts going on different amounts. We're not, we're not going to make a proposal tonight on what we think the percent should be tonight. But I think we all need to really think about this and study some of this. I'm thinking, let's work on this. We can have a conversation if we want tonight, and a few general thoughts. Continue that going into the next finance meeting. But it's really critical that on the next board meeting on the seventeenth, we take a vote. And I really would, really would like, on the seventeenth, if we can, to make a decision. We might not be able to make a decision, because if there's not a date set yet for the next election, we can't vote on a percentage, because we're voting on something that we don't have a firm date to happen yet, which is kind of unfortunate, because if I understand this correctly, there's an open house subsequent to our next board meeting. It would be great timing to hand out information to educate parents. But if we don't have that tax rate that we're going for, we can't hand out the information that we would like to.
Right. So the board, the board can certainly, they'll be great if the board works hard at the amount, if you will, for the potential increase question. On our end, when we last talked to the county clerk, county clerk's office a month, maybe six weeks ago, they had said that usually they get that calendar of election dates officially, like, people have already, I mean, it's out there everywhere that it's June the twenty-eighth. But they don't get official word from the state electoral board until the first week in August, generally. That's what they told us. We were like, okay, we'll call you back the first week in August, expecting it to be March the fifteenth, back way back then, when we were thinking it was a March election. So we're expecting now that hopefully around the first week in August, they'll confirm the June twenty-eighth date, and then we have a date. And if the board can just work on the amount, we can have something ready for the August seventeenth meeting, which, as Mr. Schultz said, would really help us just in regards to our educational component to the community, every opportunity we get.
So I sent out the information, just some things to think about. So when we had the finance meeting the other week, I mean, there was a fair number of people whose opinion was, not from the board, but the people that were, you know, in the audience, that people are either going to vote for an increase, and they were very firm, let's go with the highest rate that the community group had recommended, the sixty cents, because people are going to vote yes or no, and the dollar amount didn't really matter. So my question, just to have a little conversation, I know it's late, but I think it's, I think this is a really important topic, is what do you board members think? Do you agree with that opinion that it doesn't matter? I mean, should we go with the thirty-five cents, because we did last time? Or you think if we should go for the sixty cents, that was what was recommended, because that's our long-term solution?
We go for the long-term solution.
Definitely not thirty-five cent. It's time of COVID conditions, and we're in a different spot, and some sentiment about people are going to vote yes or no. Not a hundred percent convinced sixty cents is where to go. I was really hoping for the group to weigh in on that, which they can't, the survey, you know, people smarter than I that do this for a living day to day. Based on the fact that I think we said average home costs, or I read it somewhere, maybe here.
I put down, it's around three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
I got that up the internet somewhere, so take it for what it's worth.
And since then, we constantly get new information. I don't know about you guys, but I got my little blue slip of paper in the mail, where it went up again. And, you know, last year was a big increase for where I live. The Gage's Lake Wildwood area, like many of us, went up fifty, sixty percent, because there was a prevailing thought that we were under assessed. So I'm a little nervous. I don't know, it's a greater gurney area, if it was like that for everyone, but somewhere in between, I feel is the right answer. Something, you know, I don't want to go after this any shorter than ten years. I'm not sure nineteen. I mean, I would love it, but I start to worry a little bit that it won't pass as people calculate their individual increase.
Yeah, but if we target it on the long-term, on long-term excellence that this would provide the district, along with property value, and the fact that, you know, we're not going to come back at this in three, five years. I mean, if you think about it, the increase of it, you can go to Starbucks and spend that in six weeks. So why not spend that on your community's education? Why not spend that on our students? I mean, that's my thinking, right? And that's where, like, the, what are they called, the task force team? Or ourselves, when we're talking to people as private citizens or whatever, that's when we have to bring up all these examples of, you know, why this needs to pass. I don't think we focus on that it's an increase. It's an, it's a positive increase, right? Like, there was a woman last week who said that all she kept hearing was threat, threat, threat. Well, we got to change that. It's not a threat. It's a, we have to posit, you know, like, this is a positive thing that we need to do in order to keep the school going in a successful way. Those are just my thoughts, though.
Yeah, I guess where I was going was, I don't know, fifty cents is, you know, maybe there's.
Yeah, but if we're doing fifty cents, we might as well do sixty. You see what I mean? I mean, you're already going up, so you might as well hit what we really need. Like, we shouldn't short ourselves with the thought of, well, maybe they'll vote no, because I agree with whoever said, if you want the district to continue moving up, you're going to vote yes. If you care about your property value, you're going to vote yes.
So a couple of things to keep in mind, because I was present for all the community service group, I can't even think of the name right now, I apologize for that, is when we went to thirty-five cents, they took the surveys that we were talking about, and the professionals that we hired pretty much said, this referendum is not going to pass, even at thirty-five cents. They said, maybe the second time, it might pass. So they didn't mean that negatively, but just, you know, the position of the town, a lot of the feedback we got from people is a really bad time to increase taxes. You know what? The timing was not the best because of COVID and other things, but we had already delayed it too long. The other feedback we got then, and we're going to continue to hear, is taxes are already too high. We can't control that. We can only control these taxes. But that's the negative feedback we're going to get. We did learn a lot, though, that we need to reach out to more groups and things. My concern is.
That's where the education part of it comes into play.
Absolutely. We're going to have a whole different approach to things. Absolutely. We're going to, a lot more time, new approach. We're going to be much more organized. My concern is if we go for too much, and it doesn't pass, you know, we keep hearing things, oh, they're bluffing, they're not going to do this. Every year, we've done exactly what we said we're going to do the next year. We're not bluffing.
Pass, then guess what? X, X, Y, and Z gets cut off.
And that's my concern. If we try and go too high, and some people who are on the fence say, that's too much for me, and they vote no, then, to me, the negative of that is starting to outweigh the positive of getting a good long-term solution. I'm not completely sold on sixty cents, because I think that might be too high, based on all the feedback we've gotten before. I think thirty-five cents is not enough, because then we're going to be right back here, you know, even if it passes, we're going to be right back here in a couple of years, going through this whole process again, that we don't want to go through, they don't want to go through, nobody in town wants to go through.
I think we have, I think that we have a really good support system that, with the sufficient time, we can, if we keep positive, it's going to be positive, right? I mean, it's all, it's all here, like what you project here.
Where are you at cent-wise? What are you thinking?
I'm thinking something in the middle, because part of it is.
Forty-five or fifty?
Forty-five or fifty.
That's where I'm at, too.
Part of his perception, because, you know, again, going back on the survey and the feedback, people looking for consistency. Part of my concern is, okay, you didn't get thirty-five cents. Oh, now you're going for sixty cents. Well, for really darn good reasons why we're doing that.
Right, but then there's all these parents that kept complaining, not complaining, that's the wrong word, so I'm sorry for using it. That expressed their concern of the registration being high. Okay, well, if we get to the sixty cents and that registration, the offset is that registration now is two hundred and some dollars less, which is. two hundred and some dollars less, which is the two hundred dollars that they would be tacking on to their tax.
I agree with that exactly. And that's something I would like us to be more forward about is say, let, let's say.
Yeah, but that's when we have to pull all the positives this will bring.
Agreed. So one of the things we've said in the past is one of the things that could happen or probably would happen is registration fees go down. I'd like to find some way, say, if we bring the tax level up to X, we will, not probably, but what we will bring the registration fees down to Y. So if I'm a parent with one kid, it's close to a push. If I'm a parent or incoming parent with two kids, my fees go down enough to offset my tax increase.
Correct.
As a parent, this is great. And so I don't want to use the word, but those are probably some of our swing votes because I've had my kids go through here and I hated writing those checks out every year. But now if you're telling me our school can improve itself a lot. And to me personally, it's going to be nothing because I'll pay a lot more taxes, but I can pay in fees. I'm going to spread the good word about it.
That's our, our main audience that I think would support us, those people that have kids currently in the system or like are a year or two away. So somehow incentivizing that core voting group by that or other kind of tangible, calculated thought, you know, there could be, that could be a good strategy. I, I wish it, I wish, I wish I could say, yeah, I mean, I want, obviously I'm for the schools and would pay whatever, you know, I may grumble, but I'll, but I'm not naive. I mean, it's embarrassing. I want excellent schools. We have great schools. They can be even better and if fully funded, adequately funded. So it.
That's the word adequately funded and that's what we need to get to again.
But the politics side of this and the real world side of it of just feedback from my neighbors. And, uh, you know, we all live in various parts in the community and I know I've said this once or twice, but where I live, you know, it's the value is not three hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's a little more affordable housing around me and, and just in informal talks with my neighbors. It's, it's, it's a hard ask. I mean, it's a, it's a tough ask. So I'm trying to represent that slice of our Warren community and say like, yeah, we, we need great schools, but somewhere.
That's why they moved into your, to our township.
Yeah.
To start off.
Yeah.
That's, that's the whole reason why they moved into our township. So if we don't provide, if we don't continue to provide, provide that education and that excellence, guess what? Let's go back to property value. No one's going to move in. That's not the reason why people are going to move in with families.
We can always do this. We will, we, what we tried to show at the last finance committee meeting was two scenarios and what thirty five cent includes and what sixty cents includes and how long it were. The two pieces there were, one of them lasts a heck of a lot longer than the other. Right? And in the sixty cent, there was a full, when we did it originally, there was a full fifty percent reduction across all fees, not just registration fees.
Yeah.
But it was all of our user fees. So all I, if the board wants us to, we can put the, I mean, I just want to make sure it's not, you know, we can, we can put together something that's takes care of, and we can try to put together something that's tries to take care of the most important items, meaning it's got to last a while. Right? And our fees are a problem. They're a problem for, they're a big problem for our families. So those are two things that I think we can still try to work on. And at the same time, it might not quite be sixty cents. It might not last. We just, I just want to make sure that the board doesn't see it as a either or, because those were just kind of, that we did end up at points in between when we were at the community task force, we were at forty-five and up, we were like, we were trying to play through different scenarios. I do, it'll be closer to sixty for sure though, than it will to thirty-five because, you know, we ran the numbers. If the only way to make sure this isn't coming back right away is to get, you know, make sure that there's enough money in there. So we're not broke again in a few years. So.
Paul, have you, I mean, we have three, uh, board members that aren't here. Have they, um, out of curiosity, given you any feedback or where they stand or you want to let them speak for themselves?
Two did not, one did.
Okay. Um, are you able to share and that you would rather not?
Don't if you don't. I'd rather not. That's fine. Yeah. So in, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative on this because from the last finance committee, we had here, we had a big group of people and there was a ton of positive energy and I truly feel like it will pass next time. For all the right reasons that we brought up, the one reason that keeps tempering my enthusiasm is being on the community task force all that time. We had a large group of people in there and they were all for, this is the right thing. Sustain our education, property values is the best thing, sixty cents. It wasn't unanimous, but they're all very, very strong. This is what we want to do. And then we go out and pull the town and they're like, no. So the same thing when we had the finance meeting last week, by far, the majority of the people are here. They're either going to vote yes or no. We're going to get this. Let's do it. And so I'm having flashbacks and yep, I've heard this before.
But they also only had six weeks or so, my, my understanding is to really promote this and educate something that this time around, we have months to do and can come up with a lot of, of creative ways to really outreach.
Agreed. One thousand percent. We only had six weeks to promote how great this is and how necessary it is. The opposition only had six weeks to say, heck no, this makes no sense for all these reasons too. So we're all very positive because we're on one side. There's a large group of people that are very negative because on the, on the other side. So.
Right. That's why.
I, I'm not trying to sway with the other, I'm just showing you observations from meetings and, and conversations from prior to that.
Why, you know, like in any life scenario, and I will tell you from my own personal experience, you take a negative into a positive. And that's just the mindset that you have to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Cause I can go back to, we learned a lot at the last couple of open meetings, uh, with the finance group and things to do differently. Right down to specific areas of our community to reach out to, right down to, there was not enough bilingual information for certain groups of people that didn't understand all the facts. Great point. We didn't have enough time to do that. We'll do that next time. We didn't get involved in these. So I think there's a lot of things we can do differently next time. I'm just trying to make sure we curb our enthusiasm based on the past. So again, we're not making a decision tonight because it, and I, and even if we did have this up for a vote tonight, I would cancel it only because there's three board members not here. And I think it's important to have everybody here for that.
Yeah. And I really want to hear the other three. So if, if they're not going to be, I guess a request is if they're not going to be in attendance at the next meeting, could they, could you elicit feedback that they feel comfortable sharing, just so I get a, I mean, we all come at this from seven different perspectives. And I really want to hear the other three because I have zero idea where they stand.
Yeah. And, 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 and.
Zero.
I, I don't have a firm opinion either because there's some days I'm like, yeah, I, I wake up with a headache going, oh, just, just thirty five cents. Let's just get this passed. We don't have to worry about it. And the other days I'm like sixty cents. I think it should be sixty-five cents because that's what we really need. So it's, you know, I, I take my lithium and I go on with my day, but you know what? It's, it's a tough decision.
We structured our last two finance committee meetings a little bit differently than we structured some of our committee meetings, meaning it was much more, you know, we, we set a large amount of time out for participation from the audience, kind of engaging. Is that how you would like the August tenth meeting to go as well?
What do you guys think? Did you like?
Was it helpful?
Yeah, I liked it.
It, it's helpful, but it's one side. Like I, my issue is we're only hearing one side. I, I want to hear the other side to hear what we need to attack.
Yeah.
Okay. So then that goes back to the, so how much are we posting on social media? Say like the Facebook page, are we promoting the meetings through, you know, if the school has a Facebook account or through uh, Twitter or, you know, sending a, um, constant contact type thing where we're saying, hey, like we have a finance committee, like we're talking about X, Y, Z. Let's, we want, you know, we want to hear you out.
When did that, when's the next, yeah, I don't know. I, when's the next task? I keep using word task force. Okay. And wasn't that group made up of not everyone that was swayed? And would those people, or am I wrong? Or is that? There was something I remember from.
Originally, Tony?
Yeah, originally.
Yeah, we, originally we did try to bring people and there were.
That's my thought. There were people.
Originally, we did try to encourage board. When we did the community task force, kind of semblance of those people. We did try to get some people in there with differing views.
Right.
We did try to make sure that there was, you know, people were opposed.
Cause that's a good cross section of the community.
This is why, and this is, I can't, you know.
We, we, we tried, but like with a lot of things, if you're asking somebody to volunteer their time for something that has to do with the high school, there can be proponents of the high school.
Yeah.
You know, that's just by nature. If I'm really anti-high school, am I going to want to spend any time on a task?
No, that's fine. If they were still in the group, I would just hope that they could come next meeting. You know, that was all where I was going with it.
But, but to your point, there were some people that were on that committee that were very much anti what we've been hearing. And I would, I would welcome them to these meetings to say, hey, let's, let's hear what you have to say.
Well, there was one mom that was very opposed to the increase, no matter what rate it was. But then by the time we got to telling her, hey, you know, if we increase, then your registration fee goes down. And then I specifically remember I asked her at the end of the meeting, do you still, do you still feel the same? And she said, no, that she would vote yes.
She actually, um, was asking, how can she help volunteer her time?
So that's what I mean.
Yeah. Cause we need those people to learn the facts, the data, the education. So to your point, yeah, we have time to do that. That's why I remain pretty positive.
So what do you think of the next meeting then format wise? Tony, are you thinking no? Like not a public?
I, I never mind. Like it's, there was great conversation that came out of it. I just want to, it's nice to hear the yes, it feels good, but it doesn't help us strategize to get over the people who would oppose it. So I, I, I really always like hearing all sides of the arguments and I'm just trying to figure out how to get that. And would that format allow for that? And it's, if it just helps focus that side of the group and helps us answer some questions, I'm good with it. I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm very flexible. So if, if other people are good with the same format, it doesn't bother me any.
We would vote on the seventeenth.
Right. Well, we would not vote on the finance meeting and we, we might not vote on the seventeenth either because we have to have a firm date for the election before we do that. So hopefully we can, but.
Yeah, I'm optimistic in that regard. I, I am. I'm optimistic that.
But it doesn't help John any when, so do we, where, how are we having the meeting then?
So that, that's why it's going to fall. So you, 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 you said, how would we like to meet? What are the two options?
Well, what, well, normally, we, normally at a normal board meeting or committee meeting, even there's just limited, it's a, just like a board meeting, right? It's limited public participation, one-way monologue with the board. When we, but when we published this finance committee meeting, we kind of said, it's going to be more of an open discussion with the community, at least for a while, right? So I do like, what I think the board will need is at least some time at the end of that meeting on the tenth, to have this conversation with hopefully all seven board members about whatever is said that night or seen. And we can, whether we use it or not, we can come up with a third scenario just so that there is a third scenario, just in case there's other people who are saying, what would it look like at? What would it look like at fifty? Well, here's what it would look like. We can probably carve that up and what would fall off, might not last as long, might not be all the fees are reduced. But those are certainly the longevity of the money and the fees are big, they're big pieces to this.
I think there's a certain amount of, of public feedback I've received too, that, you know, the goal is let's make sure we don't have to do this again for at least another 10 years. I think there's a certain sub segment that'd be okay if it got us by another eight years and put pressure back on us to make sure it lasts 10 years. Cause there's always going to be that skepticism. Is the school board, is the administration doing everything they can to extend this money? And we know we are, but. So.
And we will, so what we will do is we'll have some, we'll provide some information at the beginning. Let, let our, whoever shows up for our finance committee weigh in on whatever was presented. And then we'll make sure the board has, you know, at least forty-five minutes at the, you know, half the meeting, if you will, if you need that long, just to discuss amongst the seven of yourselves about where you're at, just so that we have some recommendation to put forth for our official meeting on the seventeenth.
Would there be value to the, the, the next finance meeting to put together the third scenario, the thirty-five, the sixty, and just pick one in the middle, forty-five or fifty, just to give us a ballpark what that means?
Yeah, we, it won't be hard for us to do that. We'll, we'll scrape. Well, I have a feeling it's probably getting more like fifty than forty-five units, but we can do that. We've, and we've talked through that and.
Not trying to sway anybody's opinion, but just, you know, let's get more information and data and see what it is.
I think Mike and I talked about this, but how about adding a buck twenty-one to see what that would really do for us? I want to know.
And we, don't forget that our next finance committee, uh, for a short amount of time, we'll also share with the board our tentative budget for the.
I'm not kidding. I want to see what a dollar twenty-one would be.
Dollar. He's got it.
Anything else from the board on this?
It's hard to have good in-depth articulate, wonderful discussions at ten forty-five PM. So I somehow, when I like the idea of timings during that meeting because yeah, I, we're all tired and they got work the next day and I feel horrible and you know, but, and this is great discussion. It's just frustrating when it's later. I don't know how to handle that or deal with it in the future, but.
Can't we meet before the meeting?
Well, Open Meetings Act, yeah, leaves a three, let it be. We got to post in two days at a time.
Yeah. So, so couple of parting comments is I appreciate all you guys' thoughts tonight. I know I sent out some information. If there's any other questions or informations you would like, let me know, let Dr. Engel know. I mean, because the more information we have before that meeting, if you have questions or you feel want a conversation one-on-one with another board member, that's not a problem. Call me, text me anytime. We can have a conversation. I think the more time we spend on this topic, the better it is to make sure we get like whatever we think is best for our proposal. Topic, I'm ready to go all night if you are, Tony.
Not.
Okay.
So I.
Thank you, thank you for saying that. I appreciate that.
Wholeheartedly.
Okay. Anything else on this topic?
Just want to say, we do appreciate the board's work tonight and a long night and good conversation.
Yeah, I just feel that you had some great topics, diversity, equity, inclusion stuff. And you know, it's, I maybe would have asked some more pointed questions if I were a little more awake. So just know that all the great information.
Please.
I think.
Coffee next time.
So caffeine, but, uh, I came prepared, but it's, I just know that, uh, you know, there was some great stuff tonight and you know, it's it, just the lack of questions doesn't mean that we didn't all enjoy it and learn a lot from it. So.
It just means look out for next time. So. Okay. Moving along is our second chance of reception of visitors. It doesn't matter that's late. If anybody would like to address the board, you're more than welcome to. Just state your name and address and please keep it to three minutes.
Been up here before, Becky Howell Adams, six sixty-seven Pierce Court, Grayslake. Being in Grayslake, I know that the Grayslake Central High School, which is a lot smaller than Warren, sent out surveys by email on the issue of masks with several different options to choose from. I don't remember seeing a survey from Warren. Second point is, um, I get the impression that you're going in circles waiting for guidance and maybe you aren't aware that July thirteenth, Governor J B Pritzker said that local school boards will have the final say on whether students return to the classroom wearing masks this fall. I understand you're trying to follow guidelines because you don't have information. But wouldn't you want to find information from your parents that are attending the school on what's going to work best for their student, which might be mask choice, whether they're choosing to take a vaccine or not. We, we need to develop personally responsible, healthy children. So I was really put back by the fact that you guys weren't really prepared to decide on that when there's already thirty-nine as of Sunday, school districts in Illinois that are making it mask optional. I would think it would relieve a lot of the burden on the administrators and the teachers and the nurses to have to go around and you know, armband people every day to make sure that the armbanded ones have a mask on, the ones that don't, don't to have to ask personal health information. Are you vaccinated or not? And make the person disclose that, the anxiety that that would cause. So I'm just really puzzled and a little disappointed. I know you have a lot to get through on the agenda tonight and the whole financial thing is a big piece too. And the one thing I would say on that is find out in your, um, again, I would use a, a survey. And maybe you did, and I missed the email, um, on the referendum issue. But I, I would put it in the context of what our local Grayslake, um, Libertyville, what the average household is spending on their tax burden to send somebody from their district to high school versus gurney. And if, if we're lower, that's an easier sell to get a referendum. I think you might find that the last thing you want to do is to tell voters, hey, we're going to raise your taxes so that people are sending kids to school, don't have to spend as much registering them because the people who no longer have kids in. spend as much registering them, because the people who no longer have kids in school, who are paying for college right now, might not want their taxes to go up. So it's a sell for somebody who has children, but somebody who's done with that, it, it might be a deterrent, that might, you know? So do that kinda, I'm a data person. But again, I, I don't know what to say about the fact that you came not really prepared to deal with what to tell the students about mask choice, when other districts are already making that, those discussions, getting the information, pulling for the information. Are you gonna come back on August seventeenth and decide what you're going to impose on the students? I didn't, I didn't quite get that, like, what is?
Trying not to keep this a conversation, I think was pretty clear what path we're following right now, and just in general for everybody, I, I wish people would, would refrain from rhetoric, such as having us, that we're going to have students wear armbands to identify them.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to, I have to wear an armband at work, so.
But that's never been a conversation here, and that's how misinformation gets out.
No, but, but you're pointing to Isby and Pritzker, and Pritzker is stating it belongs to the school boards. Not him, he's not a medical professional, not Isby. And it's because there's different conditions in different areas around the states. So it belongs with you guys. Do you have the information?
Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate your time and your comments.
Thank you. My name's Jim Rand. I live at six two nine three Old Farm Lane in Gurnee, Illinois. Zip code six zero zero three one dash oh two three five. And I had a, a thought on the tax stuff. As I recall, in, um, in April, whenever it was, when there was the, the marketing push for, um, folks to vote on it, to vote yes for it, there was a, a pretty big stick. And I think that we're all parents, and, uh, when we tell our kids that if they, if they, uh, don't do something, there's gonna be consequences, and then they, they don't do that, and there's no consequences, then they're probably not gonna do it again. So as much as everybody's probably gonna hate to hear this, it seems like if you don't cut all the athletics, like, like, like was gonna, like, was kinda talked about in the media, why, why would people vote for it again? Why would they vote yes if all the athletics continue? So, and then the other thing I wanted to say is, I really like the Warren Way. Except I, I, I'm a huge Monty Python fan, and I couldn't help but think of that, that scene from, uh, Life of Brian, where it's just like, the woolen way. So now it's all, it's all in your heads, too. So, but in that, in the Warren Way, in the Warren Way, is there, is there anything in there about, uh, leadership? And what, what letter would that be? Is that the we, the A or the R? I'm, I'm sorry, I know it's supposed to be a conversation. I'm sorry. It's supposed to be a comment. I'm sorry. I, I couldn't, I couldn't see, I couldn't see the slide, so it's under engagement, wherever it is. I would just, uh, really, uh, as a, I don't wanna say as, I'm sorry. You guys are our community, you're our neighbors, and I'd love to have these conversations over, uh, a club soda for me, maybe a beer for you. I would just, um, really, lead, lead. We're, uh, right towards the end there, it was a lot about stepping back, this is the guidance, this is the guidance, this is the guidance, this is the guidance, and, uh, you guys, uh, you guys, you need to lead. And I think that it would go a long way for these other things that were, uh, the, you know, the community's really fervent over. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Would anybody else like to address the board? Not, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. This is Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Demanti?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
For yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Thank you.
What's that?
It's time to go night-night. Please turn this folder to.